Okay, we're on the record, everyone. Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Wednesday, January 28th. We had it scheduled at 6:00 PM start. Due to the snowfall, we had an abbreviated caucus and we apologize for the late start of 6:29 PM. Would everyone kindly silence your cellphones? That would be terrific. President, roll call at 6:29. Wait one second, please. Counselperson Gudziewski. Ram Chau.
Here for the caucus and here for the regular.
Bajano.
Yes.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne. Coleman.
Here.
Rivera.
Here.
Waterman.
Here.
LeVaro.
Here.
You have all nine members in attendance. Would everyone rise to observe a moment of silence?
Kevin Seymour, I'm called to my son.
William Bormerzki, father of Dorothy Woodchick and Valerie Picorillo, from Health and Human Mildred Louis Louise Miller Pettit, grandmother of Alvin Pettit, director of the Bethune Center. Barbara Stewart, former administrator for the Jersey City Chief of Police and mother of John Lynch. Arthur Demia, Jersey City resident and employee of the New York City Fire Department.
Would everyone remain standing for a salute to the flag? Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Allow me to read the titles of the first reading ordinances into the record.
Robert.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Make a motion to add 10Z9 through 10Z13 and defer to 10D and 10E.
Okay, we have a motion by counselperson Rivera, seconded by counselperson Coleman, and this is to add resolutions 10Z9 through 10Z13 to the agenda and then defer to 10D and 10E. 10Z13 is not on the printed agenda. It is a resolution recognizing February 15th, 2015, as Nimbus Dance Works Appreciation Counselperson Gudziewski on the motion.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0... Oh, thank you. Counselmembers, in rush, I neglected to do the Sunshine Statement. In accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, better known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by mail to the Jersey Journal and the Jersey City Reporter. The annual notice was posted on the bulletin board on the first floor of City Hall and filed in the office of the city clerk on November 26th, 2014, indicating the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2015. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, January 22nd, 2015, at 4:00 PM to the mayor council, business administrator, and local officials. It was also disseminated to the local newspapers and posted on the world wide web. We are in 1,000 percent compliance with the Sunshine Law. Okay, councilmembers, we are... We've done that. We've approved a motion to add 10Z9 through 10Z13 to the agenda, and we're going to defer to 10D, and I believe that's Councilman Bajano's pleasure, and 10E by Councilman Yoon. So, Councilman Bajano, would you... I'll read the title. 10D is a resolution commending members of the Jersey City Police Force... Excuse me, Police Department and the Department of Public Safety for their vigilance in solving the murder of retired police officer Frank Gogan.
Can I read it? Robert?
That's... If it's your pleasure, sir.
Whereas on Thursday, March 1st, 2012, retired police officer Frank Gogan was brutally murdered in his home at C V Avenue in Jersey City. Whereas the Jersey City Police Department, led by retired chief Thomas Comany and retired deputy chief Robert Kilduff, along with the captain Michael Kelly, joining with the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office, put together a team of dedicated officers to solve this case. End. Whereas forensic and other evidence led team members Sergeant Scott McNulty, Detective Paul Jensen, Mark Inziner, and Brian Rabbit to a person of interest, and an intense investigation commenced. The investigation took the officers to various states where they enlisted the help of many law enforcement agencies. And whereas on November 1, 2013, upon the retirement of Sergeant McNulty, Public Safety Director James Shea, and Deputy Chief Philip D. Zacky designated Sergeant Mark Conroy, along with Detective Paul Jensen, to continue the investigation with the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office. And whereas the investigation grew in intensity and interviews, statements and forensic evidence led investigators to a suspect, Annabelle Codaro, who was arrested in Waynesboro, Georgia. Local enforcement in Georgia assisted by the Hudson County Prosecutor Sergeant Javier Toro, Detective Scott Jeffrey, Detective Paul Jensen, and Jersey City Police Sergeant Mark Conroy after 876 days of intense investigation. And whereas through the unfaltering efforts of the Jersey City Police, and I want to add the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office, the murder of retired police officer Frank Gogan may have been unsolved, may have gone unsolved. Now therefore be resolved that the municipal council of the City of Jersey City does hereby commend all of the Jersey City police officers who brought this vicious killer to justice. And as I added to the... Want to thank the Hudson County Prosecutor's Office. Take the vote.
Branny? Why don't you come up? Branny? You want to take a vote? Let us vote.
Okay, councilmembers, this is Resolution 10D.
We're going to vote on the resolution, starting with counselperson Gudziewski.
It is indeed refreshing and honest to say that you gentlemen have done a job well done. And I don't think it's done enough. There's a lot of good work that's been done there, there's a lot of investigations that go missing. People really don't see how hard people work for the purpose of moving. You guys did a great job. I vote aye.
Counselperson Ram Chau.
Great job. Thank you very much, and I vote aye.
Councilman Bajano, your vote.
You know, I'm just looking at all seven of you, and I think I taught all seven of you in the police academy. I just realized that. Maybe the one guy... No, I don't know. But I just want to say you guys did a great job. And Sergeant McNulty, you're missed by the department, believe me. So, good job, and I vote yes.
Thank you for a great job. I vote aye.
Counselperson Osborne.
Just, I think, from the bottom of our hearts, we want to say thank you for going out every day and protecting us, and not only that, but helping solve crimes. And I know that must have been a tough one. From what I hear, after 48 hours, is really, really tough. So, congratulations, and thank you very much. I vote aye.
Counselperson Coleman.
I'd just like to say that I know firsthand how these guys work because they found me for questioning about something somewhere along the line on another incident. So, I would like to say I'm proud to have you guys out there making sure things are okay, and congratulations, and keep up the good work. We need you.
That's aye.
Oh, I vote aye.
Thank you. Counselperson Rivera.
The Magnificent Seven. You guys did a real good job. Really appreciate what you did. I'm sure the City of Jersey City, along with my colleagues, really appreciate what you did. I vote aye.
Counselperson Waterman.
Congratulations, I vote aye.
Counsel president.
God bless you guys, and God bless Officer Gogan and his family as well. Thank you for your service. I vote aye.
Unanimously approved, 9-0 is item 10D. We're going to put the cameras on the bravest, the finest.
Good job. Thank you. It's a lot of people. Thank you so much. It's a lot of people. Thank you so much. You took everything you need. Yeah. Did behind the tray. Peter Rabbit? Could I have you in there? No? Thank you very much.
Can you make them turn around so that everyone can see?
You, I had, I held that. You. Yes.
Can everyone turn around to take pictures?
Oh, we're not very aware of that. No, you don't have to go. Pam, you got film in the camera?
That shot.
Takes all these pictures, you never see any.
I have the honor of reading it into the record. 10E is a resolution honoring Henry Greenfield and the No Limits Organization. Whereas the City of Jersey City is proud to honor Henry Greenfield for biking 3,200 miles to raise awareness for nonprofit organization... For the nonprofit organization No Limits, which provides after-school services and theater programs for children with hearing impairments. And whereas Henry Greenfield was born in Hoboken, New Jersey, to parents Mary Jean Chiric and Frank Greenfield... Henry was born with a severe hearing loss which required him to wear hearing aids until he was 15 years of age, and later received cochlear implants in both years. A lifelong resident of Jersey City, he attended the Learning Community Charter School, followed by McNair One Middle School, and then finally St. Peter's Preparatory School. And whereas at the age of nine, he began participating in No Limits Organization theater productions for children with hearing loss. The organization had a profound impact on his life. And whereas No Limits Organization teaches deaf children the skills to succeed in school and in life through its national theater group and educational centers. This organization believes in building the self-esteem and communication skills of children who are deaf or hard of hearing by providing the highest quality of services so they can reach their potential regardless of economic status. And whereas an active member of No Limits Organization, Henry Greenfield, and a riding partner biked from Jersey City, New Jersey, to Culver City, California, where No Limits is based, Henry came up with the idea for the bike ride as a way to advocate for the vital services it provides. And whereas in completing this trip, Henry has proven himself and many others that anyone can accomplish their dreams and create change in the world. Now therefore be it resolved that the municipal council of the City of Jersey City does hereby honor Henry Greenfield for his charitable nature and continued leadership shown throughout his journey. This is signed by the council president and Michael Yoon, counselperson Ward D. Mr. Greenfield. We put the camera on you, but we have to have the council vote first. So, we're going to start with Councilman Gudziewski.
He can't hear you.
Yeah, you got to turn that kind of sideways for him. Yeah.
Really great accomplishment. I appreciate it.
Is it on? Red light?
It's on now.
Oh, there you go.
Take three.
We hear you now, too.
Take three. A great accomplishment, really, to bike 3,200 miles. Congratulations, and I vote aye.
Counselperson Ram Chau.
Great job. Vote aye.
Councilman Bajano.
Congratulations, and I vote aye also.
Councilman Yoon.
You know, Henry Greenfield, you know, you are the one of the guy always dreamed true American, you know, and you are real...
You're getting a little too close. The court reporter didn't get that.
Okay. And you're a real Jersey City guy, really. Great, good job. Thank you. Congratulations, okay. I vote aye.
Counselperson Osborne.
I'm amazed. I can't even imagine riding for 20 miles. So, I'm just, I'm kind of blown away. Congratulations, and what a great cause. I vote aye.
Counselperson Coleman.
The next time we're going to have to put a seat on her back, I want to go too. So, congratulations, and I vote aye.
Counselperson Rivera.
Good job. Excellent accomplishment, I vote aye.
Counselperson Waterman.
Congratulations, I vote aye.
Counsel president.
Mr. Greenfield, just echo my colleagues, you're an inspiration. This is truly an inspiring accomplishment and story. It's the last time I'm going to complain about that 5K walk. I definitely vote aye. Congratulations, and thank you for what you do.
This resolution has been approved by unanimous vote, 9-0. Congratulations.
I appreciate you. Yes, yes. Hey, thank you very much. Am I facing a way?
You could say a few words. First of all, thank you to the Jersey City Council. It truly is an honor to be recognized for this. I have to say, you know, a year ago, I did not think I would be biking 3,400 miles. I got involved because truly No Limits for the impact that it has on kids with hearing loss. I urge anyone who knows anyone with hearing loss to get involved with the organization. If you have kids who have any degree of hearing loss, it truly does wonders for their self-confidence. They may be based in California, but they do theater programs all over the U.S. And if you reach out to them, they will sponsor a theater for you, they will find a team to help you get the tasks that you need, and they will find a group of kids with hearing loss and create a wonderful production. And I just wanted to thank you again. Thank you.
Councilmembers, we're to the normal order of business, the top of the order. First reading ordinances. 3A, City Ordinance 15005, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 3, Administration of Government, Article 3, Mayor, and Articles 12, Department of Health and Human Services of the Jersey City Municipal Code, to move the Office of Senior Affairs to the Department of Health and Human Services. 3B, City Ordinance 15006, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of city-owned property located at 362 Summit Avenue within the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan area through the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency. 3C is City Ordinance 15007. It's a refunding bond ordinance of the City of Jersey City and the county of Hudson, state of New Jersey, providing for, one, the refunding of certain outstanding qualified school bonds, Series 2007A of the city dated February 23rd, 2007, to provide debt service savings; and, two, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $11,300,000 aggregate principal amount of school refunding bonds of the city to effect such refunding and appropriating the proceeds therefore. 3D, City Ordinance 15008, is a refunding bond ordinance of the City of Jersey City and the county of Hudson, state of New Jersey. The city providing for, one, the refunding of certain outstanding general improvement bonds, Series 2007 of the city dated December 7th, 2007, to provide debt services savings; and, two, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $14,800,000 aggregate principal amount of school refunding bonds of the city to effectuate such refunding and appropriating the proceeds therefore. 3E, City Ordinance 15009, an ordinance authorizing the cancellation and reimbursement of taxes pursuant to NJSA 54:4-3.6C for property owned by Margaret Anna Cusack Care Center Incorporated and located at 251 Baldwin Avenue on Block 09606, Lot 8. 3F is City Ordinance 15010. An ordinance vacating a portion of West Street in accordance with the stipulation of settlement dated July 25th, 2012, and pursuant to the Journal Square 2060 redevelopment plan. 3G, City Ordinance 15011, is an ordinance approving a five-year tax exemption pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey statutes annotated 40A 21-1 et cec in Section 304-12 of the Municipal Code for property designated as Block 19006, Lot 33, on the city's tax map, more commonly known by the street address of 372 Pacific Avenue. It's 3A through 3G. Counselperson Gudziewski.
Aye for introduction.
Ram Chau.
Aye for intro.
Bajano.
No on B and F. And I made it very... Expressed it very clearly on F at the caucus meeting, and I wish the Corporation Council would support what I would like to see done.
Counselperson Yoon.
B and F is no. Rest of it is aye for introduction.
Counselperson Osborne.
Aye for introduction.
Counselperson Coleman.
Aye.
Counselperson Rivera.
No on F, aye for the rest.
No on which? Counselperson Waterman.
Aye for introduction.
Counsel president.
I'm going to abstain on F, an aye for all, introduction.
Okay, F has made the introduction. It's got its five. So, 3A is introduced 9-0. 3B introduced 7-2, voting no. Councilmembers Bajano and Yoon. 3C through 3E, 9-0. 3F, a little complicated. It is 5-3-1. Voting no, councilmembers Bajano, Yoon, and Rivera abstaining the council president. 3A through 3G have been dispatched. Now, councilmembers, members of the public, 3C and 3D and 3F, which was narrowly introduced, will not be second reading ordinances until February 25th. They will not be on the next agenda as second reading ordinances. The two refunding bond ordinances have to be reviewed by the local finance board, and F requires advertisement and notification to the property owners, which must be made by the applicant, and that won't be able to be done in the lawful time period. So, we will have to postpone that public hearing until the 25th of February. Those three ordinances that were introduced will not be second readings at the next meeting, but be carried over to the February 25th meeting. Second reading ordinances, councilmembers. 4A is City Ordinance 15001. It's an ordinance approving a 35-year tax exemption for a low-income affordable housing project at 561 Montgomery Street to be constructed by Montgomery Gardens Family Phase 1 Urban Renewal Associates LP, a qualified housing sponsor under the New Jersey Mortgage Housing Finance Agency law, New Jersey statutes annotated 55:14K-1 et cec. This is a public hearing on the ordinance. Are there any members of the public? Mrs. Ball, sir?
Yes. Is this the old place where the public housing was?
Yes.
In the same spot?
Yes.
Yeah, I realize right now they're paying nothing, so obviously if they're going to pay an abatement tax, that's kind of an improvement. Will it be the same people living there or not? Or totally no?
They have the right of first refusal, I believe.
They'll reach out to them to fill the vacancies.
Oh, they have the right of first refusal, okay. So, the reason why I'm bringing this up because there's two things here. Number one, it's 35-year abatement. I just said public housing there was not paying taxes at all since the '60s, so that's actually an improvement. The problem I have with this is it's like the Lafayette. 35 years pass, and they came back for another 25, 30 years. So, I'm looking at something that says on paper, 35 years, and they come back here, I don't know if I'll be around by then, and saying, oh, I have to replace my door, that will another 35-year abatement. And that's the problem I'm having because the regular homeowner don't get that. The regular homeowner. So, that's number one. I am actually glad that something is being collected. Do you know what is being collected in terms of taxes? Yeah?
None. No taxes right now. It's public housing.
No, 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 no. Public housing do pay taxes. They had a little clause in their thing. The clause was they were able to exempt water and utilities, and as that went up, they stopped paying. You go to other towns, and they pay taxes. That was added to it.
Well, no, no.
I know, no, 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 no. I spoke to Maria Mayo many, many years ago when she was director. The abatement tax to the city was 10%, but they had that clause of exemptions. So, are they going to pay anything now?
Will they be... Can we talk about the policy?
The new one, yes.
Can we talk about the new service charge?
Yes.
And service charge is a 40%.
700... 700. Service charge, 8% of annual gross income for the 116 affordable housing units, estimated to be $123,270, or approximately $810 per unit, and 10% of the annual gross revenue for the 10 additional market rate units, estimated to be $20,646, or approximately $2,065 per unit, for an estimated total of $143,916.
Okay, do they have that clause about the deduction for utilities, like they had in the previous one? I'm sorry, I didn't mean this, normally I do, but I, the snowstorm kept me off schedule.
It was advertised last Tuesday.
My apologies, my mistake, normally I do it. But I want to know, they have that deduction for utilities like the previous abatement had? So there's no deduction for utilities, I'm trying to say? Well, I'm just saying, they had that previously deducted in it. Because you have other towns, and public housing pays taxes, but in Jersey City, I don't know how they got stuck in there, but they did. And they did pay taxes in the 60s. Okay, I'm just hoping that this is not something that coming back 30 years from now, because, you know, I went to a sheriff seal, and I went to a tax seal, and all the people who live in these homes, or not tenants, the people who are losing homes are the homeowners, especially in Wardette. So let's do something for people there to save their homes. That's where the city's focus should be. Okay, could you? Well, I'm just saying, it was a clause, because I spoke to Maria Mayo, who was the director many, many years ago. It's not a new one. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
First of all, when you're doing affordable housing, you're doing it with government money. These are tax credit housing. So if you're going to take tax credit housing, just for the 10 market hours, how are you going to put tax on it? The project I did on MLK Drive, both of them, the money comes from Washington DC, from the federal government. These are tax credit. Hope City Housing Authority is public housing money, that money that the government puts back into the community for affordable housing. That's the difference with this, why, the question she asked, and I'm just trying to clear it up a little bit. Because when you're using tax credit money, it's coming from the taxpayers, it's coming from the federal government, it's grants. It comes from, I go to Washington, I tell you again, to housing project stuff like this. That's all I want to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Stand up, Jason.
Jason Berg, for the record, how many units are there currently?
I read, I just read that into the record.
I'm sorry, it wasn't.
Very clearly.
Oh, for my, for my ears, the gods?
For everyone's ears, Jason.
Well, I didn't hear it.
What was the question?
The question, how many units are there? Is this building going to be renovated or demolished?
There's going to be new construction.
So there's nothing, so the area will be totally demolished?
Existing structures are being demolished.
Four buildings. 116 affordable housing units, 10 market rate units.
And how long will this be on the, the production as far as getting it torn down and public ready for the 160 units? What is the timeframe?
So what are these, are these questions relevant to the, are there representatives of the housing authority who can talk to you about the construction schedule and things like that?
I just do it for the public record, because again, people, and I say for the caucus, and this be answered.
Yeah, but this is a, this is an ordinance regarding a tax exemption.
Well, but again, it's still construction of a, of a building, I'm just asking, demolishing it, I'm just looking for a timeframe. I mean, it's supposed to be creating jobs.
Chuck, do you want to answer his question about the timeframe?
For the record, Chuck Harrington, on behalf of the applicant, just for the benefit of Ms. Berg, it's, the hope is to, there are three buildings that are planned to be demolished at the site, those are vacant now, it is hopeful that those will be demolished in the spring of this, this year, and that construction would start sometime in, you know, April or May of this year, provided the applicant is successful in the application for the tax credit program.
Can I ask question?
Let's let Mr. Berg finish his.
Also, with the theme of Jersey City going to have its green initiative, will it be, with these units having ways to collect water, and also for solar energy on the roofs, is going to be?
Those are cyclones.
Right. But I'm just saying, these are things that really should be done, because again, we're producing a lot of buildings, and if they're going to have a profound effect, we should be thinking about sustainability, and this not being, have Russian, Russians do something. I understand that we need productivity, but we need also sustainability, and our society is not sustainable. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's, let's finish the public hearing, and then, and then council people can have a discussion on it. Yes.
I just got a quick question. Michael Shuren, S-H-U-R-I-N, and my question is, a lot of people on this council, S-H-U-R-I-N, and this question is.
Beat the speed limit.
All right, sorry.
It's a thousand words a minute.
Sorry, I'm, you know, I'd like to go with speed, I'd like to keep it, go out of here. My only question is, you know, I interviewed a lot of the candidates up here when you guys were candidates for city council, specifically Candace Osborne, and my question for you is regarding, when we did the interview together, you specifically, we talked about how the issue in housing in Ward E especially, I, this is the Board of Ward E, Ward C, or Ward F, this is Ward F, but it was talked about how there was an issue in Jersey City that we were building housing, especially low-income housing over here, we weren't building it over here. And if you could tell me how this ordinance has anything to do with economic integration in housing in Jersey City, and if anybody can.
Pat, this is not an interview opportunity for you.
I just want, I just want an answer, because I know nobody would ever give you the answer off the record, but I tried, thank you, I love you.
Opportunity for you to conduct an interview of the councilwoman, thank you. Good try, good try. Yeah, you can, you can, you can ask for an interview on a separate occasion.
Public hearing on the ordinance, is there anyone else wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Okay, gentlemen, before we take a motion, can I ask a question?
We have a motion.
Close the public hearing.
Let's close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by the council president, seconded by councilperson Coleman, close the public hearing. Councilperson Gudziewski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVaro.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote. Close the public hearing.
Now, can I ask?
Councilman Yun, like to request, ask a question of Corporation Council?
Yes. Their land owned by Jersey City Housing Authority, right, correct? And the Montgomery Gardens family, in a, they group going to be leases land, correct? I'd like to know that, when you make a lease, how many years you make a lease, and what kind of amount, so, you know, rent, what?
So the person you know, this land is not owned by Jersey City, it's owned by the government.
That's what I'm saying.
The Jersey City Housing Authority, and, 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 and.
Yes, but Jersey City Housing Authority is part of Jersey City government, as a autonomous agency, so now I'd like to know, if you lease, how many years of lease they have, what kind of rent agreement they made?
It's, it's a 65-year lease.
How many years?
65.
65 years lease, right?
Right. I, we, just ask.
What is the rent?
Hold on, he's, Mr. Silver, why don't you come up and join him? Come on up.
Joel Silver, Michael's Development Company. To answer the councilperson's question, it's a 65-year ground lease, and we make an upfront payment of $500,000.
Well, I cannot hear, I'm sorry, what did you say?
A 65-year ground lease, and an upfront capitalized lease payment of $500,000.
Why? $500,000. Upfront, then after that?
That's, that's the lease payment.
$500,000, and you got 65 years lease.
Correct.
So let's put it this way, $500,000 divided by 65 years, how much per year now? Anybody has a calculator? How much is it?
Less than $10,000.
Less than $10,000 a year? Ten, at, less than $10,000 a year?
$10,000.
I'm sorry?
$10,000.
Whatever, and you're able to build that many units, right? And you get their tax abatement to 35 years, and the municipal government to cost, I mean, the, the service cost will be almost half a million dollars, over the 35 years, almost more than $20 million will be. You got good deal, I can say that, but we know that the low housing, that low-income housing, you know, you know, we know that we need it, you know, so you got us.
I think that's, I'm not sure if that's an acceptance, but I think it's, I think it's just a statement, there's no, no additional questions there. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thirty, no, 65 years. His name was Joel Silver. The lease of him under 65 years.
Mr. Silver, what's the name of these development company? Michael's Development Company? You, you could say, Michael's Development Company. Yes, thank you. Wanted to get that, the court reporter wanted to get that exactly through the record. Thank you. This is a.
Gentlemen, additional question. We have a 35-year tax abatement. If after expired 35-year tax abatement, then what happened to those housing? Will we stay in low-income housing? Will the developer have a right to change to condos or regular market values units? What happened?
It's owned.
No, no, we cannot hear, just say, can you?
It's owned by the government.
Federal government ain't going to allow it.
They'll all be in heaven by that time.
Okay, we're going to start from the top. Councilman Gudziewski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ram Chau. Councilperson Bajano.
I can't vote for 35-years abatement, no.
Councilperson Yun.
I vote aye, because we got no choice. It's a set, you know, and also, the Jersey City need the low-income housing, you know, so we got no choice. But I can say that you got some sweetheart deal. So I vote aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
I vote aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
I am so glad to see those buildings come down on Montgomery Street and put nice, low-rise buildings for families to live in a community, and it's low and moderate, a low-income, I vote aye.
Amen.
Councilperson Rivera.
I couldn't agree with you even more, Councilwoman Coleman. That is, I'm very happy that that's happening, 100% aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
I agree with my colleagues, I vote aye, I'm very happy, it's happening.
Councilperson LeVaro.
Yeah, I'll echo what my colleague said, it's a great step towards revitalization of the entire McKinley Square corridor, and I think this is a great move, and congratulate the developer for stepping in, making the investment, and the housing authority for their great work in putting this together and the planning. I vote aye.
We have an 8-1 vote for the final adoption. Councilman Bajano voting no for City Ordinance 15-001, Item 4A. Onto Item 4B. 4B is an ordinance honoring former Council, Ward D Councilman William Bill Gohan, by naming the 100 steps connecting the Jersey City Heights with Franklin Street, Bill Gohan Way.
First of all, I know Bill Gohan is not here, but we never saw aye and aye, but I want to thank him for this, because a child growing up in Hullboken, I used to use the old steps, now after a while I said no. It was extremely unsafe, and I passed by the new steps, actually recently, and I was very impressed, so even though he's not here, I know we're on the camera, so I want to say, I'm glad he pushed this through, it is a really nice thing. So, that's all I have to say. And the next time I go to the county, I'll tell them the same thing too.
Thanks. Hi, Becky.
Becky Hoffman.
Good evening, Becky Hoffman, I am the former president of the Riverview Neighborhood Association, I am no longer on the board, I am a member, but I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. I'm here to ask you to vote no on this ordinance, not as a repudiation of the honorary, but because there was no public process, nor any input from the community. Without that, this and similar honors are tainted and nothing but political tools. If this was a street naming, and we have a city ordinance guiding the commemoration of streets, that ordinance would have had to be followed, and it puts the designation in the council's hands, and requires that an application be filed, public support garnered, the ward council representatives be consulted, which did not happen in this case, and community organizations be involved, among other provisions. Individual honors are almost exclusively limited to individuals who have been deceased for three years. Thankfully, Bill Gohan is alive and well. This is a type of process that should have been used here, and one that the council should insist upon before designating an honorary for the steps. The 100 steps is a project that I worked very hard at, for during my tenure as president of RNA, and it was a community-driven process. The steps were rebuilt as a condition of approval for the granting of variances of residential development that's now known as the Cliffs. The community wanted the steps as a gateway to and from the heights, and they wanted it restored, because the steps had historically been there, and many people had used them in their youth, and knew how important they were. And it, to ensure that they got done, it was unique, there was a developers, it was a condition of approval for the variances, so it was a give-back to the community, and there was, I think it's one of the only ones, Robert, you may be able to correct me if I'm wrong, that had a developers' agreement, that was extensive of the one we had on this project, and the steps were to have been built at the exact same time as the builder, as the building went up, and that did not happen despite all our best efforts. So we spent the next five years working to make sure that the steps got built, and the community never gave up. And the steps were supposed to have been paid for at the sole expense of the developer, the sole cost and expense of the developer, not by the city, not by state funding, nor by any monies from the council. And it required, instead of $250,000, which was the cost estimate when the building, if it had been built at the beginning, they cost a million dollars. Now, with all that said, it's a very successful project, and I welcome you all to come to the heights and enjoy the steps. But the other thing is, as a community, the steps are known as the 100 steps. Everybody from decades and decades has referred to them as the 100 steps, and in the naming, if you do go forward, it should include the 100 steps name in it, as well as any designation. The community had wanted to name these steps after a lifelong resident, Maria Tuzel, but whether you choose to name it after her, or Councilman Gohan, or some other honorary, it should go through the public process that we, that I suggested, by first voting no on this ordinance, and then amending the street, naming ordinance, so that it includes public spaces like the steps, or anything else like that, so that it ensures that they won't be used as a political tool. Thank you very much.
Becky, hold on one second, because I was going to bring this up. The money for the steps, I understand, I don't know if it's true, have we ever billed the developer and got our money back?
Now, we're in the process of doing that, it requires the action of the local assessment board, the, and they have that project, plus the. board, the, and they have that project, plus the Green Street extension to do, that'll be done in the first half of this year.
All right, and Becky, one other question, if Michael Young goes along with, and I've spoken to Kern, you know, this has been an embarrassment for me, because I knew nothing about this, all right? This is the council person from Ward C. There was basically a compromise saying, name the gazebo in Riverview Park after Maria. I know Maria for forty-some-odd years. And, uh, you know, it's embarrassing for me to say no to Bill Gohan, it's embarrassing for me to go against something that's gotten to this point.
Right, I'm not, it, it has nothing to do with the honoree, at this point, is that there was no public process whatsoever. You as a ward council person were not consulted, Michael Young was not consulted, the RNA was not consulted, we all read about it in the newspaper at the same time.
I, I said that at the caucus meeting last week, at the council meeting, uh, I knew nothing about this, and, uh, you know, it was an embarrassment for me.
Right, but the role of, it is a city ordinance, and the role of designating and, and, uh, the naming rests with the city council, not with, uh, the mayor, um, and, uh, without some step by the council to table or vote no tonight, it will continue to happen in this way, so to, this is your purview and your responsibility, and I ask you to vote no, or at least table until a process, a public process, that will make sure that the, the ward council people and the community organizations are involved as in place. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Vito Burnetti, I've been a resident of Jersey City for twenty years, I'm currently a resident of Hackensack, but I still continue to, I'm an attorney, and I legally represent people in Jersey City for the last twenty years, first with the, uh, legal services organization on Summit Avenue, and I opened up my own firm three years ago in Jersey City, Journal Square. I am against this ordinance. Again, like Becky, I am a current member of RNA, and I am one of the original chairpeople of Riverview Neighborhood Organization that was started in nineteen eighty-three. Riverview Neighborhood Organization is probably the longest organization, neighborhood organization in the city. Richard will contest me, saying the Hilltop has been around longer, but we have consistently held monthly meetings, published a monthly newsletter, lobbied for both zoning, quality of life legislation, as is evident by what we're here tonight to do. I make my statement as a private citizen, but in support of Riverview Neighborhood Association. Also, one thing that you should be aware of, Riverhood, Riverview Neighborhood Association, as part of its motto, is not affiliated with any political person, organization, or elected official. Somehow, it seems that this may have been, this ordinance, which was introduced by the mayor, seems to have some kind of political taint to it. I've spoken to Richard Bajano, I've spoken to Councilman Young on this, neither one was notified, neither one was consulted. So therefore, the first reason why this should be defeated, is that neither of the council people were given the due respect to say, we're gonna do something in your district because, uh, the Hundred Steps and Franklin Street literally is the dividing line between C and D up in the Heights. Second, the Neighborhood Association was never consulted, was never asked about their opinion. And this has been the lack of respect that multiple administrations have had on neighborhood associations, not just Riverview, but I can point to neighborhood associations throughout the city that have been disrespectfully treated by, I've been around since McCann I, and it always seems whenever the mayor wants to do something, the mayor does something, whether it's, it's, like I said, whether it was McCann I, or it's now the current mayor. And the third thing is, both, both councilmen, as far as I understand, Riverview Neighborhood Associations have questioned the mayor, and the mayor hasn't given a reason why he wants this honor to be given to Bill Gohan. Bill Gohan is currently the chief, the, the, the chief of staff of the county executive. Bill Gohan has an illustrious career in front of him. Bill Gohan can probably get whatever he wants designated in the Heights, if you want, name the high school after him that's being built, name Central Avenue after him, name the corner where his former funeral home used to be. But this was an area of a Hundred Steps that as early as my mentor, Theodore Conrad, always wanted, our neighborhood wanted this Hundred Steps to be created, it was our only link out of the Heights to Hoboken and to the path. And now that the path train has extended with the light rail, this is another reason why we wanted it to be built. We saw the reason, as Becky mentioned, and this was, this was, uh, lobbied for by two chairpeople, Cliff Steinbring and Becky Hoffman. The reason was, we saw that there was now a chance, because they were putting together a large development on the bottom of the cliff, let's get them to put in a, a agreement to pay for this, uh, this project. And it's just disrespectful to, not only to the two council people, to the neighborhood, to the, to, to anyone in this area, plus to the council itself, as Becky said, this was done without input. Plus technically, the ordinance should have a public review process. This was not done, it was, everyone first found about it in the Jersey Journal, and everyone, both Richard and Michael, were taken back, but again, they're now in a, placed in a position where they could either, uh, embarrass Bill Gohan, embarrass the mayor, or I don't have that problem, I have no problem embarrassing Bill Gohan or the mayor. It just seems that the mayor was looking for political patronage by naming this after the chief of staff of the county executive. So I ask you to either table this tonight, look for public, uh, public comment, and I disagree with Yvonne, I've never disagreed with Yvonne in the twenty or the thirty years that I've been around, but Yvonne, you don't know what you're talking about, and if you knew what was happening, you would stand up here with Riverview and say, don't pass this ordinance. Having said that, there are two things that I do think should be done, I mentioned the first one, which is, table this, look for it, Bill Gohan is healthy as far as I know, so we, we're not looking for, we have to get, pass and designate this within a period of time, because he ain't gonna be around anymore. Also, consider what Becky has said, Maria Tuzzo has been a lifelong resident, her family has been on, on Ogden Avenue for probably close to a hundred years, she passed away several years ago. Her house is on the east side of Ogden Avenue, on the cliff, it literally looks at the Hundred Steps. Maria Tuzzo, in her term, and I've worked with her as chairperson and secretary, this woman was dedicated to the neighborhood, she would get out there and sweep not only Mount Road, but her block. This is a woman who is dedicated to the neighborhood. So I ask you to consider, if you're, if you don't want to, uh, say no to this, table this, and let's get some input from both the council people and from the Neighborhood Association. Though I understand that both, uh, Richard Bajano and Michael Young have stated that there is another project up in our neighborhood, which is the, uh, renovation of the, um, gazebo in Riverview Fisk Park, it was knocked out by, by, uh, by the storm, and that there is now FEMA funds, we're going through, working with the city to get a renovated gazebo up here. But again, it's the disrespect for both the council and the neighborhood, and I would like to see if the mayor is so proud of what he's doing, that he make a public statement and announce why he's giving this honor to Bill Gohan. Like I said, there's more than enough, uh, properties and public spaces that if he really feel Bill Gohan deserves a recognition, he can give him throughout the Heights. Thank you. Hmm? What'd he say?
Just wanna go talk.
Okay. Pretty. Hi, uh, Kern Weissman, the president of the Riverview Neighborhood Association, so I appreciate Becky and Vito coming up to speak, I won't, uh, repeat at length, you know, the, the points that they made, I also, uh, made a point of speaking at the last council meeting as well, but I do want to be clear on RNA's position, so, for the record, you know, RNA does oppose ordinance fifteen dot zero zero two, uh, we, we do believe the steps should be named after Maria Tuzzo, as was mentioned several times during the process, so this is not a surprise, uh, this is something that during the construction process, during several of the meetings, this was mentioned, uh, that we would like to do this, uh, I want to just reiterate again why we think it's important to name the steps after someone like Maria, uh, is because, one, it demonstrates and shows others that through community service, they can also be honored, and the fact that they're giving up, you know, it's, it's a very selfless, uh, you know, volunteer work sometimes, and it's, it can be an inspiration to others to see that people that dedicate their lives, as Maria did, to community service can also be honored, uh, with these types, with these types of ordinances, uh, not just public officials that are paid to do it. So that's the key difference, you know, the public officials and politicians are paid, Maria Tuzzo was not paid, she did as, as much work as anybody, uh, you know, to, for the neighborhood and for the community, and, uh, with that, with that being said, uh, we do feel that this ordinance should be tabled until there is a public review process, uh, it's the correct and proper way to do this. As I mentioned last time, it was quite insulting for, uh, for me and the rest of the RNA and the members, and there was a lot of outcry about this, because it, it, this was not, we were not directly informed, the, uh, the council people for our, for our neighborhood, for our, you know, we, 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 our boundaries encompass both Ward C and D, so, and this, especially since it's in Ward D, this should, since it's in Ward C, this should have, hundred percent absolute, went through Richard Bajano first, and then been presented to us for input. That being said, if you decide not to table this, which you certainly have a right to do, we encourage you to table this, go through the public review process, do it the right way, so that we can stem this, this tide of how this happens, we, we would encourage, we would welcome and we would appreciate your support if you decide not to, in naming the new gazebo, uh, that's being, that will soon to be constructed in Riverview Fisk Park, we would appreciate that, being named after Maria Tuzzo. I know that Councilman Yun and Councilman Bajano have agreed to support that, so I would hope, hope that the other council people on this would, would support that as well. But I have, I have to, you know, to reiterate that the, the existing ordinance doesn't seem to apply to public spaces, it, it seems to apply only to, uh, the naming of streets, and I'm not even hundred percent confident that I, it's possible that even in some cases in the past, even naming of, of streets might have not gone through the proper public review process. So I think we need to definitely, as we mentioned before, we need to amend that ordinance, we need to include, we need to include a clear process for public review before, absolutely before, the ordinance is put onto your agenda for a first reading. Now, with that being said, I think it's also very important that if this happens again, or you have the opportunity to do it right now, of course, you could table this, but if it happens again, what you need to do is you need to stem this, if, if this process, if we go through, we amend the ordinance, and we include streets and public spaces, if another, if the mayor decides to put a dedication onto your agenda, you, you need to either vote no or table it, because it, how is it gonna stop? You know, the, it's, it's something that is, it might seem like a, a minor thing, but when a community works extremely hard for something, and is dedicated toward the preservation of and advancements of things in their, in their neighborhood and the community, it's extremely, uh, uh, demoralizing and hurtful for the community, the members, the volunteers that don't get paid anything, to have this thrown in their face. So I would just like to, again, reiterate that, uh, in the future, if this happens, I would, I would hope that you guys would, uh, you know, stand, stand up to this type of thing, and make sure that the, again, if, if after the review process happens, and people still, you know, agree with it, let's say the mayor, you know, comes up with something, and the public says, yes, that's a great idea, we love it, fine, it's gone through the correct process, so that's what we're saying here, we're not, we're not impugning anybody, or is, is absolutely not, not, nothing personal, it's one of those things where we just feel that the process is broken, and it's obviously broken because we're all reading about it in the Jersey Journal, so it, it should be pretty obvious to everyone in this council that, that, that doesn't work. Thank you. Thank you.
Matt Robert?
Joe?
Oh.
Good evening. Joseph Namieal, nine sixty-two Summit Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey. Here to speak on this ordinance here regarding, uh, the One Hundred Steps. Been up in the Heights since nineteen sixty-one, right down the block from, uh, Mr. Gohan. I just wanna, now, I'm not a politician, and what this is really about is a man who's dedicated a great part of his life, twenty years, to do the best he can for the Heights. When I spoke to him about his retirement from council, twenty years, that's probably collectively more than everyone here put together, with all due respect, I know you were all new here, I mean, just to put it in perspective, he said one of the top three accomplishments that he was most proud of was getting these steps completed and on its way by getting a commitment to funding, okay? At this stage in the process, to try to table or withdraw it now, would be an injustice to the value that he served to the Heights community, for whatever reason. There are a lot of other awards and naming that could go on to give to other deserving people from Riverview that I've heard here, but Bill Gohan, twenty years, relentless, uh, the longest-serving council person in this city that we've ever seen. So I'm gonna keep it short and sweet, move forward with this, please, and you vote for Bill Gohan, and in the memory of Bill Gohan, for all the good things that he's done for the city, he deserves it. Thank you.
Jessica Glennza, uh, thirty-fourth Thorn Street.
What's your last name?
Glennza, G-L-E-N-Z, like zebra A.
B-L-E-N-Z-A.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I totally agree with the members of the RNA, in that I don't think it's about this particular person, uh, but that there should be a level of transparency to how these things are named, and, um, I think that's really important, and was obviously overlooked here, so, I agree with them.
Yes, we wanna make sure.
What's happening?
Robert Gohan, let's speak on the record.
Hi, I'm Robert Burn. I had the pleasure of sitting next to Bill Gohan for twenty years, and what I think we have here is a failure to communicate. I don't speak for the mayor, never spoke for any mayor, uh, don't speak for the council, but I can tell you the Hundred Steps wouldn't be there today if it wasn't for Bill Gohan being a bulldog. And I think the mayor, not speaking for him, may be bestowing this honor upon him, because for eight years he sat opposite him while he fought for the development of the Hundred Steps. So I just made history, now I'm gonna sit down.
One million lights out.
Motion. Second. We have a motion by the council president. Seconded by Councilman Rivera. Close the public hearing. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchall.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajano.
Uh, this-
Close the public hearing. Councilperson Yun.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Lavaro.
Aye.
We have a nine-zero vote. Close the public hearing. For the final adoption of city ordinance fifteen zero zero two. Councilperson Gajewski.
I vote aye.
Councilperson Ramchall.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajano.
All right, look, uh, to avoid embarrassment, all the way around, uh, I spoke to Kern, and I thought we had an agreement, the gazebo, which Michael goes along with to name after Maria. As I said, this has gotten to this point, if it had started off and we were notified, I never would have allowed this, I would have gone to the community, being, you know, as I have for the thirty-six years in the Hilltop. Uh, I can't see embarrassing Bill Gohan by saying no, and I can't, you know, and I know if I, when I say yes, it's gonna annoy a lot of people, but I promise you, the gazebo will be named after Maria Tuzzo, and Michael goes along with it one hundred percent. Uh, as I said, I knew nothing about this, I would have objected from the beginning, and it would have gone to the community. So, to avoid embarrassment for Bill Gohan, who's set up here for eight years, or twelve years, whatever it was.
Twenty years.
Twenty years, twen-, wow, twenty years, God bless him. Uh, I'm gonna say yes, and, uh, you know, Vito, I understand your point one hundred percent, believe me, Vito, but, you know.
Councilman Yun?
Well, the first things-
tried to make sure and avoid this kind of case. And I hope it's not happen again, so we have two representatives from the mayor's office, please, you know. Just mayor say, tell the people obey the law, but about times the mayor have to obey the law too, all right? And he's the mayor, and he's not emperor of Jersey City, you know, so we got to make sure that. And also, also, Councilman Bill Gorhan, former Councilman Bill Gorhan, he served the longest councilman in city of Jersey City, history of Jersey City, and every time the 100 step issue come up, when I heard the RNA, I always speak with Councilman Bill Gorhan, actually he put a lot of work also. And we have to know that councilmen actually still follow, when he admitted, Councilman Bill Gorhan is actually deserved to have his name in the 100 step, I think probably he knew that and he recognized that Councilman Bill Gorhan did a great job for to bring the 100 step in that area. And I also understand in the community issue, it's not only insult to councilpeople representing the C and D, but also they insult embarrassing community leaders who put a volunteer help to their own community. So I hope it's not happen again, but I say yes, Councilman Bill Gorhan deserved, and also gazebo in the Riverview, we agree with together, community leaders, we just got to make sure it's happen, okay? So I vote aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
So, I am going to agree with Councilman Bojiano and Councilman Yun. I'll be, I'll make sure that that gazebo gets named. We will make sure collectively that we do the proper steps for that gazebo to be named after Ms. Terso. But I need to really clear something up here. I've been involved with youth recreation in Jersey City for 25 years. Bill Gorhan has sponsored over 15,000 kids during that 25 years. So for people to come up here and taint Bill Gorhan's name, I can't sit here and allow that to happen because it's totally unacceptable. I understand one thing has nothing to do with the other, but I am here, again, to come in the defense of former Councilman Bill Gorhan, just for the dedication that he has, that he's had throughout the city, and for the impact that he's had on many, many kids throughout the city of Jersey City. So although some people might see him in one light, I'm giving you another light and another way of seeing Bill Gorhan as a man who has been dedicated to this city and dedicated to his ward when he was present for 20 years and continues to do so. So with that said, I vote aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Let me give some clarity on the naming and renaming policy. There is a policy in place, and it is really a good policy. We have to amend it to add city property, okay? That's what we have to do. So when you said that, you know, this was something that just was overlooked or we just slipped through, it was just something that, you know, we really didn't thought that it needed to be added at that time, that's all. We're not trying to take anything away from the association. We realize the work that you guys do, but we also realize the work that the councilperson has done also. And he does deserve, because he worked hard on this issue, even though we know you guys worked hard also, but you need a councilperson that's going to fight for you to get it done. And sometime, I don't think people really understand that as much as councilpeople fight to get things done. So with that in mind, I don't have a problem amending the policy, but I would encourage you to make sure you get it to me right away, because you want to name this gazebo, and if I get that policy in place before that's done, you're going to have to go through a long process, and I'm telling you. Okay? All right? So with that in mind, I vote yes. Okay, all right, because it's a good process now.
Council president.
I don't want to give the people a notion that the process doesn't work, because it is a process, and there's a committee that meets first, and then the council vote on it, okay? All right, okay.
Council president.
So, yeah, I think it was discussed or said earlier that there's two ways to kind of approach this vote, which is a vote on the process, or it could just be a vote strictly on the naming of Bill Gorhan and honoring Bill Gorhan in that sense. So let me address the former about the process, and then I'll just say very briefly that the, that the process is, could be better, definitely. I don't think anyone's disputing that. And Councilperson Waterman has put something forward that we can look to amend on the issue of the gazebo and the naming of the gazebo, have 100% support there, and I'll back you 100% on that. But this vote, I think, is really about Bill Gorhan and the councilman for 20 years, and I know that so many people contributed to the 100 steps, and while I don't know Bill Gorhan very well, I don't have a long history with him, I spent about 18 months on the city council with him, and we probably disagreed on a lot more things than we agreed about, but what I can say about everyone who's been, I've served with on the council, everyone, including everyone here, is that I know that they bring a passion and a commitment to service. And that Bill Gorhan did that for 20 years. And during that 20 years, as far as I know, that he was committed to also bringing this 100 steps to fruition and working with you, and also I know oppositionally at times, having some, I mean, some tough times with the RNA on that. So, you know, that kind of service and his commitment there, and like I said, in the short time that I've been on there, as Robert Byrne said, he's a bulldog, and when he has the insights to get something done, and he fights for it, he'll fight. So with that, I vote to, to honor Bill Gorhan and to honor a living Bill Gorhan, and happily vote aye.
Adopted 9-0, city ordinance 15002. Item 4B. Onto item 4C. Item 4C is city ordinance 15003, an ordinance amending the Jersey City Municipal Code, Chapter 296, Streets and Sidewalks, Article 7, Excavations, to amend the standards for street excavations in Chapter 160, Fees and Charges, Section JJ, to increase the fees to excavate streets. Mrs. Ballser.
Yes, what would it increase to? The city could tell me, what would the fee increase to? What would the fee increase to?
Hold on a second.
What do you mean, that you open the street?
Yes, what would the fee increase to?
Yes, you may. My name is Stanley Huang, a city engineer. The ordinance, the major change is that demand that any excavator on the city streets will require to pay from curb to curb and maybe block. And that's pretty much, you're talking about repave the entire block, with someone come in and try to provide a sewer or water line service to individual house.
So you don't have a standard fee?
Well, currently, I think every individual will pay anywhere around $10,000 to provide a service of the, you know, water and sewer line without the additional requirement of paying curb to curb. And depending on how much we demand the, the, the pavement, the resurface area, in general, if you had to pay, say, roughly 100 feet long.
Yeah.
Curb to curb of the city streets of 30 or 40 feet wide, we're talking about somewhere around 350 square yard and convert into $35,000 in addition to the work. So each homeowner may be increased in.
I think, just to interrupt you for a second, I think she asked how much the fee, the city fee increased.
The city fee was going to be.
Yeah, so the city fee, so.
City's fee for the street opening.
I think the councilwoman, Stanley, is going to respond to, but thank you.
So previously, it was $25 per square foot of the area to be excavated, but not less than 1,000 or more than 25,000. It's been changed, fees for water service line to each house connection 150, fee for sewer service line to each house connection 200, fee for both water and sewer lines to each house connection 300. Administrative, I'm sorry, administrative, a new one, a new fee of administrative fee for a traffic permit is 50.
The fee is only $50 for administration plus the size of opening. So in normal situation where water and sewer line is to be installed, you may be calling for three foot trench or four foot the most. For the length, depending on whether water line is on the far side of the street or near side, it could be 20 foot by six foot, 120 square foot, if it is nothing much. And the fees for the first 50 square foot is $50, and the additional one will be currently $1.75 per increment, per square foot increment. So if you 120 take away 50, you have additional 70 square foot. 70 square foot will be charged for $1.75 in addition to the original $50.25. So the cost is like 200 something for the, for the normal fees.
Well, I'm thinking about the average homeowner, I went through this probably 12 or 15 years ago, in which my sewer line broke and I had to replace it, and including the off-duty cop, which annoyed me because he was on my step, he wasn't even doing what he supposed to be doing, I spent something like $4,000. So what would the average homeowner be facing if they have to replace the sewer line? I mean, that seems like a lot of money, in addition to the fact that if the zoning change goes in, they'll have to pay $150 for the zoning permit that we talked about earlier, you know, so you have this. I mean, what would the average person be looking at? You know, you have a family, they save up, they buy their home, and the city lines are very bad, I mean, living downtown, you had all that heavy truck traffic, and it really wore on the streets, and the lines break, and the homeowners got to pay for it. So what are we talking about for an average cost to a homeowner? I mean, it can't be the point that, this is what I'm trying to say, government is not becoming affordable. We need affordable government, not affordable housing. What are we putting on the backs of the regular homeowners?
Yeah, but I'm asking, I'm using my position, perhaps the water main break in my position, it probably was halfway in the block, parallel to my house, and I know what I paid, around $4,000 around the year 2000, something like that. So what would the average person pay today? I mean, we're talking about maybe bankrolling homeowners. And I'd like to know, if, it should be like, if I paid 4,000 15 years ago, would they be stuck with 8,000 for the same job? Would they be paying 10,000 for the same job? So about $10,000 to replace a water fee? So the mayor is now nickeling and diming us through these fees and saying taxes didn't go up. This is an awful lot of money. 10,000, this might be $10,000 for my $4,000 job.
These numbers coming from?
Well, he mentioned, excuse me, the gentleman, the engineer, mentioned the fact that it could be $10,000.
Yeah, I don't know, that's.
He did say that.
No, no, please, let's not have this.
I'm sorry, the $10,000 is the contractor who performed the services charged to the homeowner currently.
The contractor.
It's a contractor, without talking about additional paving involved, because the additional payment, if it's imposed, the contractor, I mean, the homeowner will pay, come up with another $30,000 or more, or whatever.
That's a lot of money. My total bill, contractor and everything, was 4,000, maybe a little less, maybe $3,150. But this is ridiculous, and absolutely is ridiculous, that we are placing this burden on people, considering the fact that the city took $31.5 million, our money, and the problem is not the homeowners who make those problems with the street, it's the heavy truck traffic. It is the snow that's not being removed right away, and it's heavy, the snow is heavy, it freezes. In fact, my neighbor downtown, her P S N G pipe broke from the heavy snow from the city, and it weighed on her sidewalk, and we had a gas leak. Luckily, P S E N G didn't charge her fee. But we talked about the city taking our money, and that money should probably should be going into the fee of helping our homeowners with these tax fees. They didn't cause that breakage at all.
You know, can I? This ordinance has some issue. One of the major issues is that when you do street open by emergency situation.
Yeah.
Then not much problem you have. But if we have as a property owner, and you plan to some kind of capital improvement, let's say you use oil heating system now, it's about time charge change to gas.
Yeah.
So order to put in the gas heaters, you're in a building, because you're building like a maybe 12, 13 units, 14 units, now you have to be brought the new gas line to your building. Order to do that, you open the street, right? Because it's not emergency situation, once you open, as you, as a property owner, have to resurface, not just part of it, from the curb to curb, corner to corner block. So when you calculate your construction cost, maybe opening street so-and-so used to be $15,000, let's put any numbers, but now, once we pass this ordinance, your cost can be $60,000 or $100,000 additional.
These numbers are.
No, no.
Just came out of nowhere, literally an hour ago.
You know what is this problem? This is the problem we have, but the other hand, as a city council, we have to protect city street. You know, P S N G or any company, you know, open space, when they backfill so-and-so, they do really bad job. Even I have experienced my sidewalk open by P S N G, when they, you know, patched the, you know, sidewalk, they did really bad job. End of day, many years later, cost me almost $7,000. So we, as a city council, we try to limit that kind of a problem in, you know, that through the disresolution, I mean, the ordinance, but actually, this is going to be increasing lots of, lots of extra construction costs, have to be, you know, homeowners have to be swolled, you know what I'm saying? That has issue.
I, I, I.
single-family, the multi-family home that low residents would own. This is really more of a protection against people who are landlords and businesses from being able to tear up the streets without having to cut the cost, so that we don't This is really more of a, of a protection against people who are landlords and businesses from being able to tear up the streets without having to cut the cost, so that we don't have to pay.
Yes, now, when we talk about under ten units, if you see that the, most part of Jersey City, like, uh, three or four street building, more than ten units owned by small property owner. And also, when you do the capital improvement, those kind of job, if your street resurfacing less than ten years, you got choice, you gotta wait three, four years to wait past the ten years, or if you wanna do some kind of capital improvement, that street less than ten years resurfacing, then you get big burden, I mean, cost comes down here. So very simple, but this is the problem. If P S and G do provide backfill over the years, if they did great job, or any contractor do open the space in the, on the street in Jersey, if they do good job, we don't need this one, you know?
Okay.
But actually, they do very bad job, you know?
Okay.
That's what we try to control somewhere.
Let, let's allow the public speakers to finish their public speaking.
What I do wanna say is that, in addition to having, um, the water line replaced, probably twenty years earlier, I changed to gas, and my, my gas line was actually in my courtyard, not in the street. And P S and G came, and they, you know, wasn't a great job, but it did, but now I'm thinking I may have to replace the courtyard, and that's kind of ridiculous. So, I'm, you know what I'm concerned about? Things get passed, and then another council comes along and amend something. And I'm worrying about the, the burden, the real burden, that I've seen every council has placed on small homeowner, and then screaming that we need affordable housing, but you're making homeownership so unaffordable. Yes, should they do a good job? Yes, that's why we have inspectors. We really have inspectors. Inspectors should be out there. I've seen, where I live, where I live at now, and even downtown, I've seen the city replace, um, the curbs. And then they take that concrete water and they pour it down the sewer. I'm furious. The reason why downtown floods a great deal is because through the years, these, and no one is on them. The city should be out there inspecting them. That's their job. That's really, is their job. But the idea of, of putting this burden on people, it's one thing to pay fifty dollars. This plus proposed zoning of a hundred and fifty, you know, think about it. Not everyone has, you know, has a hundred thousand dollars paycheck coming to their home, they don't. And they're trying to support their family. So I'm, I'm just concerned about the burdens you're placing, because I know what it's cost me. Thank you very much.
No, there's no, there's no woman. Yeah.
Can I get some, straighten out on this? Who, 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 who presented this ordinance?
What was the question?
Who presented this, I want some clarification on the ordinance.
Brought to by council.
My, my question is because my nephew does water and sewer lines all over the city, Jersey City, Hoboken, Union City. He did, he did a, a, a water, a removal of an oil tank on Pacific Avenue, right down by our family home between Bramhall and Communipaw. He had to go from the curb to the ladies' window for where the gas tank, the oil tank was, just recently. And, and took, dug it up out of the ground, had dug their yard up, and when he dug the yard up, he had to replace everything. He did the sidewalk right from the, the fence of the house to the curb. And he did the street, and he did it, and you can't tell it's been done. They've been doing this for twenty, thirty years, starting back with Buddy Robinson, water and sewer lines in the city of Jersey City. My nephew's been doing it, he's forty-five years old, he's been doing it since he was sixteen, working with his uncle. He does it in Hoboken, Bayonne, Union City, Jersey City, Sean and Sons, Estabating. So I really want some teeth to this ordinance, because I need to go back and let him know what's going on, because they already paid fees. They already, when they go do a water and sewer line, they gotta put that stuff back right. Because they have city inspectors that come out while they're opening up the hole, while they're closing the hole, and when they come back, make sure that sheen is back, that black top is in that street, right?
Laverne, this is the intention of the ordinance, make sure it gets done right.
Right, okay, can I get a copy of this ordinance? Because I really want more teeth to it, if you don't mind.
There's some teeth.
I really want more teeth. Thank you.
You got a copy of it?
Hi, Matt, step on up.
Evening, council president, council members.
Evening.
Um, I, uh, I just wanna say first, I took a few minutes today. Oh, I'm sorry, Matt Schapiro, S C H A P I R O. Um, I, I took about five minutes today to, um, to read the ordinance, and it was very clear on the, on a first reading of the ordinance, um, that for the, for the everyday homeowner who owns a, a property of one, two, three, four families, um, that this, it doesn't apply to, that they don't have to repave a street if they have an emergency. Um, and, uh, you know, if anybody bothered to read the ordinance before coming up and speaking, they would have been able to see that too, without clarification from Corporation Council. Um, what, what I think, this is just a, a very, this is a common sense ordinance. It's basically saying, if the, if the street was just paved, and you don't plan properly and decide to tear up the street afterwards, then you have to, then you have to repave the street. I mean, for, is, it is, it happened very recently, where on Fifth Street, someone, that the entire street was repaved, and then the next day, or the day after, uh, they, they tore it up again. And, um, that's all this is, just simple common sense. And it gives everyone the opportunity to, to know when these things are, when the street is going to be paved, so if you need to do so, you may do it before. And, um, for those who decide not to time things correctly, then they have to repave the street, so that it, it's, because it's not fair to the residents to have a situation where your street is just repaved, and then somebody comes and tears it up and simply puts a patch on it. Thanks very much. Oh, and, uh.
It's not fair to taxpayers.
Correct.
You could repave the street, like in my house, like water, it's not my fault.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Emergency, I could rip up the street the next day, or my gas line, I had to have my gas line replaced.
But Councilman Bodriano, these, the, it doesn't apply in those situations.
There's, that's an emergency.
But the developer should be responsible, when people have emergencies, they want one line.
Exempt.
They're exempt.
And they're exempt from this ordinance.
They're exempt.
Uh, thanks. Also, um, Councilman Rivera, I wish, I wish you're still on a speedy recovery.
You want to come up again?
Thanks very much.
Huh?
Jason Burritt? I'm glad that the city is preparing to do something effective. I've seen P S and G do such a poor job that the car sank into the newly paved hole. The situation is simply, I'm sixty-two, and I've seen many holes in my life. And basically, Jersey City's required, when I dig a hole, they have to remove all the dirt and take it out because it's contaminated. New Jersey is the second most polluted city in the, in the state. It's also capping off the hole with concrete. They don't do that anymore. And that's key to keeping your street level. And that is very important, that, that, that's done. Again, I had a hole dug in my, in front of my house when the P S and G, no, the Jersey City Municipal Utility Authority had a water main break. And they broke my sewer line, nine feet down, and they denied culpability. One thing that's gonna be necessary, you guys need to look at, is that a job is done on a piece of property, it really should be not the responsibility of the homeowner that has been damaged by a contractor, by the, the, uh, Jersey City, um, Municipal Utility Authority, second, uh, second and third party, United Water. They're very arrogant, the United Water. I mean, I complained to the United, uh, United Water, they were gonna give me three thousand dollars for a four thousand dollar job, I mean, seven thousand dollar job, and it wasn't fair. I called my insurance company, and they said, oh, oh, since you're, you're, wanna do that, we're gonna renege on the three thousand. But I'm still out seven thousand, uh, I had a five thousand dollars, but I still had damage in my house. But the real thing is, is that if you, you talk about inspectors, you're lucky to get an inspector. They had to close up the hole. The real thing is, is that, one thing that really needs to be done, and part of that ordinance, is to have that contractor take pictures before and after through the whole process. I mean, that way, everything's being documented. We are in a technological era, era of quick communications, and that needs to be part of it. Accountability, I can say, I did a good job. And then you park your car, and it falls in the hole, because it's a sinkhole. Look, up, up where I am, and what, in the, up in Wood Day, near, off Danford Avenue, one block, I can't remember the name of the block, it keeps on sinking. The whole block was ripped up, ripped up again, I think it was ripped up at least two or three times. But the real thing is, is that I don't know what's causing these sinkholes, or whatever. But again, we want accountability. But again, when, if a person rips up a street after it's been paved, yeah, that person who was doing that should be paid for, but emergencies, I'm glad that, that individual can patch that hole up. And that's, that's really reasonable, because again, I didn't go out and break my sewer line. I only got two, two pieces of six inch by a half inch nineteen forty-five.
Hey, Jason.
Pipe. Again, if, as long as it's people, people are not being burnt, but you always pay for that.
Understood.
I mean, we pay.
First of all anecdotes aside.
We bought, you pay an extra four hundred and fifty dollars for a policeman, seventy-five dollars an hour, and the city, the city gets half of a portion of that, so does a police officer. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joe Valenti, I, um.
Joe, what's your last name?
Valenti, V A L E N T E. Uh, the only thing I really wanna say is I'd like the ordinance to be tabled, this way we can review it a little bit more, because, uh, you gotta understand, we're not the only ones that dig out there, there's, there's a water department, there's Verizon, there's everybody. And P S and G, we are, you know, we work with the city all the time, we try to do the right thing, we are infraredting, but now you guys are requiring us to pay the whole street where we dig. Majority of our jobs, they're not that big jobs, it's going to a person's house, all right? And you're saying to us that now you want us to pay the holes block to block. It gets infraredded, we'll do whatever we can to work with the city, but what I would like, to see us working together, partnership, as we always do, with the city, come up with a, an ordinance that would satisfy you guys and us, because at the end of the whole thing, the customer, your residents, are gonna pay for it. Because if, that's the bottom line. So we would like to work with you guys, and give us the opportunity to work here. And that's the only thing I'm asking. And just table the ordinance until one week, two weeks, until we have the meeting, and we're all together to, to make a better ordinance. That's the only thing I'm concerned, that's the only thing I'm asking from the councils today.
Who do you represent, Mr. Valenti?
P S and G, Pope Service, that you can guess.
P S and G.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert Vertebello from the Law Firm of Conal Foley, we, uh, represent P S and G on this matter. Uh, I'm also a resident of Jersey City, uh, of a, a single-family, uh, home. Um, we, my understanding is that, um, our office did have, um, some preliminary discussions with the municipal council on this ordinance. Uh, we also, uh, would like, uh, to request that it be tabled in order to perfect the ordinance. I think, uh, this, the, where the city's coming from is a valid point. Um, I think there are a few things in the ordinance that are of concern, uh, to the utility providers, and, and as a taxpayer, I'm always concerned about the, uh, what we'll refer to as the law of unintended consequences. Uh, while I think, uh, there is a definite benefit, um, to this type of ordinance, um, we need to make sure that, uh, we account for certain work that's already in the pipeline. P S and G, in, in particular, has already been working with the city and is planning many large-scale citywide, uh, upgrades, which it's not entirely clear from reading the ordinance whether or not, um, those will be, um, subject to this ordinance, exempt from this ordinance. That's why we think the better approach is to sit down, have a comprehensive meeting with, uh, with the city, and with representatives of P S and G, so that way we make sure that an ordinance of this nature, which is beneficial to the city as a whole, uh, is, is done right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. Stanley Huang. Are you here? On behalf of the administration? Are you here on behalf of the administration?
I'm sorry.
Are you here on behalf of the administration?
Ah, yes.
You're speaking on behalf of the Department of Public Works right now?
Yes, for the, for the resolution that I have helped, uh, review and prepare.
Excuse me?
Well, this resolution, I have reviewed and helped prepare that, so I know the detail.
Yeah, so, uh, did someone request Stanley to speak?
No.
You haven't been requested to speak, so, thank you for your time.
Please.
Good evening, council, council president, my name is Stephanie Daniels, one forty-three Graham Street, Jersey City, oh seven three oh two. I think this is an awesome ordinance. I think that we, for too long, I don't know about you guys, but I drive my car, which is about this big, and, you know, whatever, whatever it is that it's gonna, that it costs, this ordinance would cost, it won't, I, I understand that it won't cost me as a homeowner, and I understand also that, that whenever the city has to pay, has, has to repave streets, we're paying that as, as part of our taxes. It's not like that just comes out of the air. So, somebody's mumbling behind me, sorry. So I, I, I really encourage you to pass this. I think this is a quality of life issue, I think this is an issue that impacts our taxes and our, our cars and our safety, and I, I am all for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public speakers? Nope, we've got, uh, two more, three more.
Hi, Maria Nieves, that's N I, Nieves, N I E.
Nieves, I got it.
Uh, president and CEO of the Hudson County Chamber of Commerce. Um, I'll be brief, uh, our main concern, I actually think there are a lot of good things in this ordinance, particularly, uh, some of the language that requires new protocols that would coordinate projects, um, because certainly if the city is expending limited resources to resurface these streets, you don't want then somebody to go in and tear them all up, um, because there's been a lack of coordination. Our concern though is with the language, it does require these more, these new standards that are more broadly defined, the sidewalk to sidewalk, curb to curb, resurfacing on those roadways that are just, uh, ten years or, or younger, if you will. Um, and just given the scale of the types of improvements that a P S and G is committed to making with the Energy Strong program, and I'm sure that Verizon and other utilities have, may have similar programs in place where they're making these large-scale improvements, you know, our concern from the chamber's perspective is that, you know, those improvements and upgrades to our energy infrastructure are critical. So we do wanna make sure that they will go forward, and that there won't be obstacles in place that these utilities might, uh, say are cost prohibitive. That's one. And then number two, we are concerned that these costs, the additional costs that could be incurred with, uh, these new requirements might in fact get passed on to ratepayers, which then would disproportionately affect residents and then small businesses. So I'm asking you to please table it, perhaps take another look at the language, work with the utilities to engage in further dialogue, um, and if that's not possible, then, you know, obviously vote, vote no, and then take a no, and a fresh look at this. Thank you.
Public hearing on this ordinance, anyone else wishing to be heard?
Jeremy Jacobson, twenty Erie Street, J A C O B S E N. I think this ordinance is, uh, pretty straightforward, actually, and I think it's a good thing. Uh, basically, it's a very simple principle, the roads belong to the public, uh, and we're basically asking that anybody who works on them put them back the way that they found them. So if you have a road that is been freshly paved, it's put back the way that it's found. A couple of my, uh, former speakers have made some excellent points. Uh, first of all, the residents already are bearing the cost of any roads that are done improperly and not done curb to curb, either because the city has to repair them and it comes out of our tax money, or be, or through the potholes damage, or, or other problems with vehicles and traffic and all those intangible costs. Uh, there was also a, other pieces of this ordinance that we feel like minimize, uh, some of the quality of life issues in the neighborhood, some of the disturbances in the neighborhood that we get from people, uh, making, uh, construction in a haphazard way. Um, and I just would, did want to say, uh, that in terms of speaking to a couple of the, um, concerns, I, I don't. There was also other pieces of this ordinance that we feel like minimize some of the quality of life issues in the neighborhood, some of the disturbances in the neighborhood that we get from people making construction in a haphazard way. And I just did want to say that in terms of speaking to a couple of the concerns, I don't know that any of these things are going to be cost prohibitive for someone like Verizon or PSENG, seeing as we're talking about very well-heeled, very well-financed companies, and we're talking about shifting what would be a burden from the public to the private sector, which is actually where it belongs when the private sector is repairing the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing? One more?
One more?
Stephen Sanders, 66 Sussex Street, Jersey City, New Jersey. Been here 27 years, I also have the good fortune to have spent a career in the power industry, so you could say I'm wearing both hats, as a citizen and a homeowner, and also as a utility company employee. But the costs, the costs to the public are considerable. Crane's New York business has done a study, costs an average of $600 a year to automobile owners. I would remind the young lady who spoke from the Jersey City Chamber of Commerce, that although we are concerned about the power industry and water and sewer as infrastructure, roads are also critical infrastructure. That's how emergency vehicles get through, including police and, and ambulance. And that's also how much, if not most of commerce is still done. So roads are an essential, critical infrastructure. What we're talking about here is not just the cost, but how those costs are going to be apportioned. And I would argue that, that the incremental cost of an energy-strong infrastructure is not going to be affected to any significant degree by this ordinance. The roads have to be repaired, and the roads have to be repaired right. So let's just get on with it and, and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing on the ordinance, is there anyone else?
Second.
Wait, 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 anyone else wishing to be heard?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Osborne, seconded by Councilperson Waterman. Want to speak on this ordinance?
No, I want to speak in general.
No, 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 you're, we got you on the list, Steve. I got you on my list.
Yeah.
Councilperson Waterman will give you the second to close. Close the public hearing, Councilperson Gajewski. Ramchow.
Aye.
To close.
Aye.
Bajano.
Yuen.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote to close the public hearing. For the final adoption of city ordinance, 15003, item 4C. Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajano.
I'm going to abstain until we sit down with PSENG and everybody else. I know Candace sat down with PSENG today, but I think more of us should have been involved in that meeting.
Councilperson Yuen.
Well, we have to protect city street, and also, we've got to make sure that the utility company able to provide service what the residents we're looking for in Jersey City. And what I can say that, I spoke with Councilwoman Candice Osborn, and she also admitted to have some issue in this ordinance. And she also promised me that, you know, after we pass this one, she's going to amend to try to make it out, work with the PSENG, and also small property owner. 10 years, 10 units is not right, you know, so we've got to have to work it out. So based on her intention, very good intention, so what I'm going to say, aye, and she promised to come up is alternate plans, amend that, yes? Yes. So, we've got to protect the city streets. So I say aye, and I'll promise that, she promises, we're going to amend something that together, work together, so utility company, and also property owner, small property owner, okay? So, I vote aye.
Councilperson Osborne.
So this to me is an important quality of life issue. We all drive around Jersey City roads, and, and they are not as nice as roads in other neighborhoods. In fact, they're not as nice as the roads in Union City, where this law is in place. And while no legislation is perfect out of the gate, we did meet with Union City, we learned about the things that worked, the things that didn't work, we tried to adjust this legislation accordingly. I know that specifically PSENG has some concerns about some money that they're bringing, that they received some grant monies, and we've committed to having a meeting next week, and assuming that these are legitimate things that we believe as a city we will change, we will bring forth an amendment to accommodate, to make accommodations, or to make the ability to have accommodations, if the city deems they're appropriate. And with that, I vote aye.
The Councilwoman Candice, when you have a meeting, will you, can we include us? Okay?
We can only have three of us, but I'll include, I'll include two of you.
Oh, she's going to include Rich Bowden and Michael, good. Thank you.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
Councilperson Waterman.
Aye.
Council President.
I'll just very quickly say, first of all, I just wanted to address, there was some early talk about some numbers being thrown around, $10,000, $60,000. I'm going to say this, you know, we had a first reading two weeks ago, and representatives from engineering didn't present any numbers, okay, didn't come, and you come just kind of talking about numbers to the public on TV, adding a little hysteria to the situation with unsubstantiated stuff, and, you know, as engineers and folks, you bring documentation and you bring evidence to, to a discussion and a dialogue, and you don't just come kind of bringing rumors and innuendo and so forth. So, you know, I, I want you to know, there's a little bit of loss of confidence over here on this side, and makes me wonder what's going on in our, in our, in our engineering department, and that it's not just about this law, but maybe when we look at the quality of our streets and so forth, maybe we need to start talking about the quality of our personnel and what's going on there. I want to send that message loud and clear, because I didn't like the way that this dialogue was kind of conducted today.
Council President.
You're welcome. And so, whose interests are we truly representing here, is, is I think one of the primary questions. And I commend Councilperson Osborne, this truly protects taxpayers' interests, as many people have already spoken, we make huge investments in our infrastructure here in Jersey City. And those investments are important, not just to local residents, but to our economy and to our businesses, small businesses and large businesses alike, and they, they are the backbone, infrastructure development, this is the backbone of our economy in that sense. So it's an improvement to our quality of life, and, you know, at the end of the day, again, who are we protecting? And the taxpayers, I think, are first and foremost here, and making sure that they're not picking up the disproportionate burden of the costs here whenever we have these sort of blunders going on with regard to the repaving and so forth of our streets. So I commend you, Councilperson Osborne, this is great, I vote aye.
We have a 9-0, excuse me, 8-0-1 vote, abstaining Councilman Bajano, for the final adoption of city ordinance 15003, item 4C. Our last second reading ordinance, item 4D, city ordinance 15004, an ordinance supplementing chapter 332, vehicles and traffic, Article 3, parking, standing, and stopping of the Jersey City Code, amending section 332-24. No parking certain hours, designating 25 feet in front of 102 Van Ripen Street is no parking Monday through Friday, except holidays, 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, 11:00 AM to noon, and 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM.
Motion.
The public hearing on the ordinance, are there any members of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Coleman. Who closed the public hearing? Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Councilperson Ramchow. Bajano. Yuen.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Lavarra.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote. For the close of the public hearing, for the final adoption, city ordinance 15004, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ramchow. Bajano. Yuen. Osborne. Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. Barrow. Council President.
Aye.
We have a 9-0 vote for the final adoption of item 4D, city ordinance 15004, our last second reading ordinance. Where to the public request for hearing, Laverne Washington? Steve, I have you as number 15.
You know, first of all, like I asked for, I need clearance on that ordinance, because now that the council president said what he had to say about the ordinance, is this about public service, or is this about homes that have, have water sewer line fixed, or changed their, their, their energy from oil to gas, or is this only, is this ordinance about public service? Because it's confusing right now to me. I don't know about to nobody else, because then she mentioned about grant money, that public service, so what is this ordinance about? Can I get some clarity on it? Is it about small businesses that, because like I said, I got a very debt interest, because I know what my nephews and them doing this city for, doing water and sewer line, and I know when they have to do it, they have to prepare back and make sure the street is right, the sidewalk is right, so can I get better clarity on this, Council President? Is this, is this ordinance about PSENG, or is it about everyone? That's what I'm trying to find out.
All right.
It's, it's about, so the rule is if, let me, let me think about how to say this, the best-
I don't care, this is important to me, it's all right, it's okay.
It is, it's about when Jersey City makes an investment with taxpayer dollars, when we bond 15 years for a road, that we want to protect that investment, because we're using, when we make a capital investment of taxpayer funds, we want to protect them. And so, there are many people who might disrupt that, and it might be, so some people might want to tear up a road because they have, they want to construct a new home. Some people might want to tear up a road because they want to do maintenance on a-
I understand that.
So it covers all of, all of those people are covered.
That's what I wanted, because at the end, it seems like it was more focused on PSENG than the, you know what I'm saying?
No, it covers, it's, it's, we have to have one standard, we don't, we can't create rules just for one-
That's what I'm saying, that's why I was, that's why I wanted more clarity on it. No, because this way I know what, go back to tell my nephew. And I, yeah, I mean, I appreciate, I, I missed the council, my, my grandbaby died two weeks ago in Georgia, and I've been away, but I did take the kids to the Martin Luther King breakfast, and I appreciate the three tickets that you bought, and the two that the mayor, but you, you really came across me, and I just wanted to say personally, thank you for that. I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. Jamie Vasquez. Jamie Vasquez, none here. Karen Freire De Souza.
Aye.
Yvonne.
Yvonne Bolser, I want to talk about the 16 acres of land that the mayor is transferring to Liberty Science Center. I want to first say, the mayor is the mayor of Jersey City, he is not the mayor of the Science Center. His obligation is to taxpayers and to the budget. Now, I bring this up because the city's currency is only land, we don't have a sales tax, we don't have an income tax. So that's the currency for the city, and it's being given away. At this, I think that property should be assessed, I'm asking the city council to assess the value of that property. If we can sell two and a half acres to the medical center for $24 million, then what is that worth? The view is Liberty State Park, the view is not a, a city. It's prime real estate, it really is. I'm appalled by this. He took the other money that we had already, which was the $31 million from the water. I mean, this is ridiculous. To give the land to something else. I have been to so many auctions, just to see who was losing their homes in Jersey City, what if, it's, it's really sad to see how many homes are going to foreclosure, what if? Because they can't afford the taxes or the water, that we giving land away. I am absolutely appalled. I also want to bring up the fact that Peter Marco had to pay in, three years ago, $21 million for 3.4 acres of land. And, and from what I miss, Peter's Marco land and the Liberty's, the land, the medical center had to pay, is not as in greater condition, because they don't have the view that this land has facing the park. I think it's appalling. I absolutely think it's appalling, and I'm asking the city council to assess what the value is. It is probably $100 million. And if we could sell that land in marketing, that could go to pay off some debt, and if the debt is paid off, it would be a real win for homeowners with their tax bills. And I think it's absolutely, we gave him so much, and he takes our land away? This is, it's, it absolutely is wrong, and it should not be, that the mayor should have the right to appoint a developer without public hearing. It's absolutely wrong. It's our land. This, according to the newspaper, the public school population will increase by 25%. They're going to need more places for public schools. We're going, we're going to go bonding to buy out people's homes, to put a building there, when we had the 16 acres there too? So I can see it on many sides, how we're being caught short, and I think it's absolutely wrong, it really is. We receive no benefit from the Liberty Science Center. We don't have, there's no sales tax, with some merchandise is there, and we have to provide the safety for that building. So I'm, I'm just really very upset with the mayor, who's the mayor of Jersey City, and not the mayor of Liberty Science Center. Thank you.
Peter Barnes. Esther Whitner. Beverly Castillo.
Good evening.
Elizabeth?
Excuse me?
Are you related to Elizabeth?
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
It's okay. I'm a lifelong resident of Jersey City. I'm here to call for the resignation of the now acting director of the Jersey City Rec Program. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. The director has already shown that his lack of concern for the program, for the program, from my understanding, his son was recently stole a rec vehicle and crashed it. The matter was swept under the rug, and his home was recently raided by the Sheriff's Department. Who is overseeing the rec department as a whole? I ask because in one instance, I had a, an employee of the, of the rec program come up to me and asked me if I wanted to get a library card, and when he did, he seemed to be under some type of influence, of drugs. Are these the kind of people that we, that the director is hiring to run these programs?
The recreation department you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I hear you.
I just think this is unacceptable, and just, I'm just calling for resignation. Thank you.
Andrew Andrade. There's plenty of room, if your name is on the speaker's list, I'd ask you to migrate up towards the front. The entrances are grand, but they take a while. Thank you.
Good evening all. I'm here to talk to you about the discrimination that goes on at the recreation department. You know, it's already hard being a minority, especially living in this city, there's a lot of gentrification going on. I went to school in downtown, we have a new wave of people coming in, discrimination going on here, you know, I feel once in my own city. Now I go to work and have to deal with discrimination with my boss and the people there. Ryan Struther hires people who are part of the Mohammed camp, and that's not fair to nobody, this is not going to be tolerated. People are scared to come up here and talk about it. Everyone said, "Do not speak against it, you're going to get retaliated." Everyone said, do not speak against it, you're going to get retaliation. Mohammed's a powerful man. You know what? I'm not going to let these people bully me no more. I'm sick and tired of it. Why is it, the city gave this out the other day. Reissuance of executive order of the mayor of Jersey City. Laws prohibiting discrimination. It says that it's unlawful to discriminate or harass based on race or political affiliation. And you know what? The attorney general said the same thing and the E E O C. So my question is, does, is Ryan excluded from this? Does he not have to follow these federal and state laws? Why is it that all these people in this, in recreation get hired that were former convicts, former addicts? And they don't look at people based on qualifications or the work that you do? They hire you based on who you affiliate with and if you're friends with Mohammed Akil? That's not right. Ryan hired us, a group of us in the summer to do the summer hiring program for the youth. He purposely put these hiring locations at the Bethune Center, made it difficult for all the students from all other parts of the city to access the Bethune Center. I have a list of here of all the people that were hired. Most of them are African American in Ward A and F. When I went to do interviews in Dickerson, I was told by my supervisors, we're just doing this interview to satisfy the people in Dickerson, but we are not to hire no one. Ryan removed the higher powering that we had. Because when I was hired, we were told, you guys are going to interview and recommend for hire. When I came to hire, he took all the applications that are sitting here in personnel. You could go and see for yourselves. It's all African American because he made it easier taxes. One person, uh, by the last name of Buddington, don't remember his last name. I interviewed him, I said, I do not recommend this person for hire. Gary and I walked into the room, told me he has to be hired. Few months later, this guy comes out in the newspaper for shooting someone. So they don't care what, they just want to get their people in. And in the recreation department, they cover each other's back. An employee back there was verbally threatened and they tried to sweep it under the rug. And this is not the first time this happened. Last time Cynthia Blue pushed someone and Ryan covered up the story. They lied to police, they lied to everyone else. This goes on too much in the recreation department. And the, Ryan will not do a favor for you or help you out if you're not part of his team. He only helps out the African American employees and everyone says it. I didn't believe it when I first started working there, but everyone started telling me. If you're not, they will point to objects, they will say, if you're not this color, you're not going to get nowhere here. I didn't want to believe it because I didn't think Ryan was a bad man. But now I see what goes on in this department. And it needs to stop and will not, and it shouldn't be tolerated anymore. Thank you.
John Frohling. Riyaz Wahid.
But Robert.
Ed, I'm timing you, Jason, go.
I'm just recording myself for prosperity. Last, last two weeks ago, I tried to give you a sheriff's constitutional officer, I wish to give you a copy for record. It's very important that we have order in our law. The problem is, we have no law with our order. Because there's no justice in the system. We, the people, when you go to court, in the city court, you expect to receive justice. You don't receive it because you're in an equity court. How you know you're in equity court? By the flag with the yellow fringes. It's called an annuity court. That annuity court is there to do one thing, to collect money for the city. It's like Monte Hall's deal. You have a price of a top dollar. See, it's five hundred dollars. And they, judge will make a deal with the prosecutor. Hey, do take it now, you get a discount fifty percent. So instead of being five hundred dollars, it's now two fifty. The real thing here is that it's very important to be honorable, follow the oath of office. Everyone here in this council chambers and every city employee has signed the oath of office, which is to uphold the constitution against foreign domestic enemies. As, as a veteran of a Vietnam era, I never rescinded my oath of office of being in that position. And I take my position as an oath keeper very seriously. We do have challenges in this country. Our nation, the supposal republic, which was turned into a corporate, corporation in eighteen seventy-nine, basically has been at war with us. Executive orders, there's only twenty-two things that the government can do. And in those twenty-two items of the constitution, there is nothing for executive orders or memorandums. They're outside the president, the mayor, the governor's power. Yet, through past works, it becomes a reality of the line. We are living in this country in fiction. And something known to be false is assumed to be true. Ryan versus Motor Credit Company, one thirty, N J, exquire five thirty-one, twenty-three A D, six oh seven, six twenty-one. The statutes which would deprive a citizen of the rights of a person or property without the regular trial according to the course and usage of common law would be the law of the land, Hop versus Henderson. Our elected servants are out of control. Americans operations of, on fiction of law, that is a duty of the sheriff, working with the people, is necessary to protect the noble rights of the people by simply enforcing the said laws. The challenge here is even the sheriff can't even do his job because the prosecutor tells him what to do. And that becomes a problem. You try to file your papers with the county clerk, oh, we can't do that, we can't file that object of, of your affidavit that goes into miscellaneous files, still filed. Any clerk, every, any, every court and every clerk in the America are responsible to file their papers. If the papers are not accepted, that's a felony. You have a right to redress your grievances in the First Amendment. We have the right to a good news service. We do not receive that. We only got five corporations running the news medium right now. And how much honesty can you receive? We're lied every day. If you read The Hidden Persuaders of nineteen fifty-seven and the.
You have five seconds, I, I fall asleep. You have five seconds.
With everything, folks.
Sum up.
We are here, you are here to serve the people, listen to the people, work for the people. And when you don't do that, it really becomes a shame. I know you are at different, different points in your life. Thank you very much for the opportunity. And I have another copy for the president also. Thank you very much.
Counsel president.
Yes.
Members, quick question.
Yes.
Can I ask a few questions for one of the public speaker, Andrew Andrade?
Sir.
Well, you're going to wait till finish the public comment?
Yeah, let's, this is not a, it's not an inquiry. Let's continue with the speakers. But we have people who've been waiting to speak.
When we finish the council meeting, you get down and sit down.
So we got to wait till?
We're in public speaking right now.
Okay.
It's complete our public speaking.
All right.
Paul Bird. Paul Bird. Now, Jason, we weren't calling you twice. Bascharat Naz.
I'm not the bird man.
Oh, what? Did he speak? Greg Lanese. You want to comment on something? Not here. Oh. Are you Greg?
Yes, sir.
L A N E Z.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, counsel. Good evening, Jersey City residents. Been a longtime resident here since nineteen eighty-nine. And I've seen a lot of progress here in Jersey City. We're moving the right direction. I've also read that the Philip administration plans on increasing population here in Jersey City to an additional eighteen thousand residential units. And of course, by raising the population, our power consumption is going to increase as well. So it's not really much of a thought, it's more of an afterthought each time we turn on our electric switch where our power actually comes from. If you look west towards Carney, we have a coal power plant. Now, coal power plant is something that we've created since the eighteenth century. If we plan on becoming a twenty-first century city, we have to consider other ways of getting our electricity. Now, on a daily basis, I'm not representing any power companies, any alternative energies. I work for a cancer company. I work to help cancer patients get better. And I've noticed an ongoing pattern. I've read many epidemiology studies where we keep on putting ourselves into an environment that keeps on increasing our cancer rates. If we plan on increasing the population and also increasing our power consumption, we're going to leave ourselves into these pollutants caused by the coal that we need our power from. If we need to consider other ways of getting electricity, all we need to do is look towards east and notice that on Roosevelt Island, New York City has already developed a plan to harness the energy out of the East River and use turbine power to run Roosevelt Island, which they also have a technology campus. Now, Jersey City is in a prime location surrounded by the Hackensack River, Hudson River, and our neighboring city Newark has the Passaic River. If we can look towards and harnessing the power there, we can look in ways to increase our electricity capacity here in Jersey City while not increasing our cancer rates here in Jersey City. I'm not thinking about five years from now, ten years from now, I'm looking at a hundred twenty years from now. And Councilman Rivera, I understand you're a clinical researcher. You've seen these studies where certain environmental factors in our environment causes us to have cancer. And if we want to put Jersey City residents into that type of atmosphere, you know, it's your opportunity as council members to change the environment that our residents live in. It's a quality of life issue. And I've emailed you that project that's already been initiated on Roosevelt Island. And I adhere that you look at ways of making sure Jersey City is a twenty-first century city where we're not dependent on eighteenth century technology. Thank you.
Steve Hyman.
Good evening, members of the council. Robert Byrne. I have so many problems with Jersey City that I don't know where to begin. But I'm going to begin from a beginning that started in two thousand and five. In two thousand and five, I actually bought the embankment property. I gave it to my wife because I wanted to make sure that she could handle it in case I wasn't around. No, no sooner did we buy the property or she bought the property. We went to, um, a planning, a planning board hearing. And Joanne Monahan sent the letter to the planning board to deny Carmine Lampy's application. Without even hearing the application, she said that, um, I, I might not own the property, that there might be a lawyer that they might hire to, um, prevent us from acquiring the property. His name was Charles Montaine. And, and a whole bunch of other things. Well, they chased Carmine away. We went to the court, we went to Judge Gallipoli. And he told the planning board that they had to hear us. The planning board actually passed the application. And then the city sued the planning board. I've been up and, up and down the, the scale in so many different cases in Jersey City. My wife has spent twenty-five million dollars defending this property on Sixth Street. Councilman Yun doesn't believe that I own the property. But we can give him good reason to understand why we do. In addition to that, this property is called an embankment property. It's, it was a, a line of rail trail that, that existed. And according to the law, you can't sell the property if you don't own it. And you can't sell the property if the surface transportation board says you can't. So before we close on the property, we contacted Congrail and said, do we need to abandon this property? They gave us three different answers, in different places, different answers. They said, it doesn't need to be abandoned, it was abandoned, and it's a spur. As a spur, it doesn't need to be abandoned. So we bought the property. And no sooner did we buy the property than Jersey City went to Washington DC to overturn the sale in two thousand and five. They've been trying to overturn the sale since two thousand and five. And after ten years, I would think that, that Joanne Monahan should free us from being hostages. Mr. Yun thinks, or Councilman Yun thinks that we don't own the property. My wife doesn't own the property. She's yet though, paid taxes continually every quarter for ten years and has nothing to show for it other than canceled checks. I would like to have a hearing, I'm, I'm in the appellate court right now. We're fighting this case in the appellate court. It's been in appellate court for over a year and a half. And what's the case about? It's, it's about stopping my wife from having title to property that she owns and can't use. Now, Lefrak has the same property on Tenth Street. GNS Developers has the same property in, in the Newport Mall. I talked to people from GNS today, and they don't think that we own the property. But right in their brochure, it says former Congrail property. Jersey City colluded with Congrail to remove the tracks, take down the bridges, and never abandoned almost any property in the Newport area. They acquired the property by fraud and deceit illegally. And I'm the beneficiary of, of, of all of that. In the negative. I would like to come back and talk to you anytime you want. Your, I'll answer any questions. I'm an open book. But I just can't do this anymore.
Thank you, Jeremy. Can I ask you a quick question? If a city say their property is not owned by him, then why we send to property tax bill? I mean, you not the, if the city believe that their property is not owned by him, but how we can send a tax bill? We send a tax bill who's not on the property? Can't you explain the why?
That's a question for the accessory collector. But what I will tell you is, it's most qualification to explain that way. The real issue with property is can probably transfer to him and as a result, that transfer will show up for you.
Wow. Jeremy, if that property was illegally transferred, the Tenth Street property should, the development that's being built there should be stopped tomorrow. I passed it today, they got writings all over the wall. You want to talk about historic? That property on Tenth Street is historic because that goes to the tunnel from the eighteen fifties that was built. So if you're saying that sale was illegal, then we better get on Tenth Street. I brought it up a month ago. And also, maybe you better go. And also, maybe you better go after Newport too, because that was all railroad property too. And if it's, you know, what I understand is sale of railroad property or government property is supposed to go to state first, the city second, and everything. I also believe the city turned down the purchase of the Sixth Street Embankment years ago.
I mean, city say, I mean, you say illegal, he owned the property, then he's not, that's not his property, but still we sent a tax bill?
I have deeds for it.
I can understand.
And I've got title policy for it.
You know, we send tax bills to the statute.
I mean, city, Jeremy?
Corporate counsel, is this a legal issue? Because I remember we had a closed session on this issue because it's a legal issue.
There's litigation involved here.
It's in litigation. Why are we discussing that?
I mean, we're not discussing with that, but I mean, when the public hearing and the people.
The folks are saying what I said, which is that issues about when bills go out and who goes to go to the accessory collector, has the property? In his opposition, that property is improperly transferred and we need to go in. Beyond that, it's not to discuss with the accessory collector, but I don't think it's hard for us.
All right, Jeremy, are you gonna stop the Tenth Street then building? That sale of land has to be illegal if his sale of land is.
I don't think that at all.
I brought it up last month.
Wait, wait, not too at a time. Ed, Councilman.
Oh, if his sale, his purchase of the land is illegal, the Tenth Street Embankment land, the development should be stopped, the developer should be made to put it back to the way it was tomorrow.
How could you say that if you don't know the process?
Because he just said the state, Congrail, own both pieces of property. And if they can't sell to him, then they can't sell to Newport or whoever the heck owns the Tenth Street Development.
So then, are you proposing that we go under litigation on that as well?
Well, why?
I know, I'm just trying to ask.
Yes, how can you crucify one entity and not go after the other entity? It's illegal.
Okay, so then put a proposal to propose that we go under litigation there.
I'm asking the corporation counsel to find out tomorrow.
Okay.
Have a brief account transfer, as well as the management, if you can ask them to do a transfer.
I think you should put Miss Monahan on it.
Where are we? Mr. Byrne?
Jeremy, Jeremy, we want to be fair, you know what I'm saying? And we'd like to see the bank month come up as a part, yes, it's a great idea. So it's not on the case. What I would say is that you just mentioned today illegal transaction. So city of Jersey believe that the property is not his, then why we send the proper tax bill to him? You know, see, now, okay, they'll also make sure.
He's saying the sale should be voided.
Yeah, if his sales, yes. If his sales is avoided, then he's not on that property anymore, right?
I have a question, Councilman.
Okay, so, all right, good.
I've answered my question.
If somebody has to make that action, okay.
Can I participate in the closed session and let everybody else that's here go? I don't, I mean, I'm available anytime, day or night.
Thank you, we heard that, we heard the voice.
Thank you.
What?
Thank you, Steve.
Jesus.
Thank you, Mr. Hyman, I believe you're fine.
I'm sorry.
I believe your five minutes are expired.
What?
Your five minutes, your public speaking time is expired.
Yes, I know.
Thank you.
But I'd like to be able to have a meeting with the council and not tell me ten years later that I still don't own the property and that they're billing me and.
Mr. Hyman, yeah, Steve.
Mr. Hyman, you could speak with the corporate counsel afterwards, your time is.
He won't talk to me.
So then let's just move on for the next speaker.
You said he wouldn't talk to me.
Mr. Hyman, let's move on to the next speaker.
Next speaker and last speaker.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Is it David Cosme? David?
Good evening, counsel. My name is David Cosme, and I work for the Jersey City Department of Recreation. And I'm here to inform you that there is a lot of hostility, discrimination, and threats of violence going on in that department. I was told, I asked, I asked around and I was told that Mr. Rivera, that your part of your platform is the Department of Recreation, so in this, I will be speaking to you directly. Somebody that works for the Department of Recreation threatened to smack me in the face. And I went to Sabrina Harold, who I was told was the deputy director of that department, and she asked me to put it in writing, and I did. On January the seventh, at about eleven AM, a gentleman that works for the Department of Recreation, his name is Gary Nye, approached my desk in a very aggressive manner and was demanding to take my calendar, my desk calendar. Once I identified his intimidating posture, the way he was speaking to me, I immediately walked away. And at the same time, he took the calendar from my desk that was given to me by a coworker named Ronald Uteralo. And he told me that the next time I took his calendar from the desk, which I did not, it was my coworker, that he was gonna smack me in the face. I immediately was gonna call the police and was told not to do so by Sabrina Harold. She told me not to. I called someone who advised me to go and press charges because this guy had, this gentleman had threatened to smack me in the face. So I did not do so. But when I called the person who had advised me the first time, he told me, take your break and go press charges, which I did. And when I was at the Burien Avenue Police Station, the director, Ryan Strava, called me, and I told him that I was there to press charges. He told me, don't press charges, come back to the department, which I did. He said he was gonna handle it in the department. He sat me down and asked what had happened, and he wrote it down. I called the person again who told me initially to go press charges. He says, I don't care what they say, just go press charges, which I did at three sixty-five Summit Avenue, and I had an attorney. My attorney told me that let's just, let's drop the charges and just ask the judge to instruct both of us to keep away from each other, which is what I did. I dropped the charges. And nothing, why I'm here is nothing has been done to this gentleman named Gary Nye. He's walking around the department, nothing was ever done. And I don't feel comfortable working in that department anymore. I've been with the city for twelve years, eleven years with Health and Human Services and one year with Department of Recreation. That place is, it's complete and total hostile work environment. I don't wanna be there, but I need my job. So I'm just begging the council to step in and do something because I already did everything I was supposed to do. I don't wanna be there, and that's all I have to share.
Let me ask a quick question, BA.
Is appropriate vehicle for employees to have these concerns with the transport? This is not it. I encourage you to go see HR. I feel that you're missing some areas.
But, okay, now, let me ask you.
Should we address these matters with human resources?
Yes. Do me a favor, listen. We have, we have a mayor's office representative, and the BA office is here. Seems like, you know, when the people, city hall stand up as, you know, here to speak up their own department is not easy. You know, they require lots of brave to stand up. Now, we can feel it, they have some issue. I like from the mayor's office, they should be fully investigated, every issue they bring up tonight, and I want to make sure we get some report of that, all the issue they bring it up. If this is not, not a small issue, you know?
It's illegally discussed. It's the.
It's not only legal issue, there are a lot of issues there.
Yeah, but there are human resource issues, and those are not the issues that we're discussing on a public forum. There's a human resource process that they need to follow, and that goes through the department, and that's how that works. We don't discuss that.
So this is what we, you know, what you should do is go through that proper chain of command.
Yes.
Go through, and then I'll personally follow up with that, just to make sure and to see what is going on in the department. But I urge you to just go speak to the human resource director, go speak directly to Nancy. And I will, I promise you, I will follow up with her as soon as possible.
Councilman, I did go and I spoke to Lady Nina Abouam, and she called the director, and I don't know what happened. I just, I just want you to know that I cannot, I need my job, but I just do not wanna be in that place.
I understand your frustration. I mean, I don't, I don't think this jeopardizes your job at all, but I will.
I really hope not.
No, no.
I really hope not.
No, but I will tell you, we will follow up with human resource. I'll follow up with them in the morning, but you just make sure that you follow the steps. If they haven't gotten in contact with you, then listen, by all means, you know, reiterate to them that you definitely need a follow-up, you know.
And I did take proper protocol, took proper steps, because the first person I spoke to was my union president. He told me that since this guy had threatened me to smack me in the face, it was a criminal matter. It wasn't, it wasn't a union matter. So I did speak to, and my last thing is coming here and speaking to you, that's, because I don't know what else to do.
I'll follow up with them tomorrow, and I'll have human resource get in contact with your union rep, because you have, I guess you have a shop store that represents you. So I will follow up, you know, with human resources tomorrow morning.
If there's a union rep issue, if the union wants to deal with a job, if there's a criminal matter, like under the definition call.
But I think they've done that step, and nothing has been addressed.
I don't know, because I've seen the process, and I've seen it work. So that's why I have a concern. I've seen the process, and I've seen it work as a council person. So why it's not working is, I don't.
There's a threat here. So my concern, my concern, and I understand this is a union thing, my concern is the threat.
Okay. We'll follow.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Council members, that's it, that's the speakers list.
Second.
No, there's no motion necessary. I think someone's gotta move. I get that a motion, no, thank you. We have petitions and communications, item six, ten, six A through six E three on a printed agenda. Mr. Basinberg gave me another item to add about the sheriff being a constitutional officer.
Claims and addendums.
We are now to noting the existence of the officers' communications, item seven A and B, reports of directors, eight A through F. We're to the claims and addendum number one, Councilperson Gajewski.
Aye.
Ram Chau.
Aye.
Bajano.
Aye.
Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
On page eighteen, I abstain on New Jersey City University and vote aye on all the rest.
The claims and addendum have been paid unanimously, except we're noting the abstention by the council president on the payment to New Jersey City University on page eighteen of the claims. We're at ten A through ten M noting that D and E were approved earlier. Councilperson Gajewski.
I have a question on L. The condominiums owned by the city, what's the status of those? Are they occupied? Resolutions?
Resolutions.
Resolution, ten L.
These are, my understanding is they're currently vacant?
Yeah, they've been vacant for a long time.
And there's a.
There's supposed to be a plan.
The council is involved in trying to figure out a solution. When these units were originally approved.
Hello?
Yes.
When, when these units were originally approved before the zoning board, the zoning board allowed additional, allowed a number of variances, including height and density variances, which are called D variances. And in order to obtain them, you have to supply what they call special reasons or something that's inherently beneficial. So what the developer did was agree to give the city seven units of these, seven condominium units, and give them to the city for a dollar. And as a result of that, he got all the variances he sought, including he was allowed to build, I think, another eight units himself at fair market value. He got some height, parking variances, a whole series of things. Thereafter, he refused to give the city those units. And the city got into prolonged litigation with him, which was finally resolved about a year or so ago. And when the city went in, finally got access to the units, it turned out that the units had been vandalized, cannibalized. We think that, you know, some of the, like, the heating unit was removed maybe by others either in the building or the prior owner or whatever. So there was work that would have to be done before the units were either rented, sold, or whatever. And I know they've, I don't know exactly what that number is. I think it, I've heard ranges everywhere from seventy-five thousand dollars total to as much as two hundred thousand. That's for all seven units. And then from there, it's, the city either has to decide to rent the units, if they can, to artists who are of moderate income, provided the rents are such that they are affordable to those persons. Because those, your income qualification, as well as the rents, what they call affordable rents, are all prescribed by state regulation. So you have to fit into, you have to both be affordable, you have to be a certified artist, and you can't be, you have to be able to carry the cost of the units. If the city doesn't rent, they could also possibly sell. But again, that, if they decided to sell, you would have to have occupants who qualify as artists and moderate income, and the carrying costs of the unit cannot exceed the regulatory prescription as to what is considered affordable by the state. So it's not as easy as, as one thinks. Then, of course, it's possible that it is, the carrying costs on the units, the CAM charges, what they call the common area charges, are about seven hundred dollars a unit, which is quite high. So you're ready. It's about seven hundred a unit, which is quite high. So, you know, when you start, when you start to do these calculations, you're already seven hundred behind. And then there are utilities on top of that. I think the taxes are very modest, as they should be, because they're affordable.
So is there, so I think the background is great. Is there an ETA on this getting resolved?
I know that Jeremy has been working diligently on this, and I have a small part in it as well. And we're trying to gather information to see what's doable, what isn't doable, and then if it isn't doable, what the city's options are, what we can do to dispose of the property one way or the other. So I'm sure the mayor will look at it first, and then the council will also have to make a decision. But I think a lot of it'll turn on whether these numbers work.
You know, while. Three months? I'm sorry, I have to have a follow-up, because I didn't feel like exactly my question was answered, I'm sorry.
I don't know the ETA exactly.
Three months, six months, a year.
Oh, no, no, it's months, maybe, if that, more like weeks.
Okay.
Weeks.
So they're gonna come up with a plan, you know?
Yeah.
Because we don't wanna spend sixty thousand dollars every year, you know, for nothing.
Absolutely. You know, I think it was very well-intentioned. It's on-site, set aside affordable housing, which is what everybody is, you know, promoting these days. But it's, it was not well-thought-out, this plan for this particular building, the costs are quite high.
So we can say that this, Jeremy, is your fault. You're gonna come up plan right away. Okay, good.
No, when did this happen?
It's always his fault, no.
When, what year, what year did this happen?
The zoning board approved this originally before construction in two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four?
And then I don't know how many years after, I think it took. I think it took him a while to build those units. But then it was in litigation until last year, I think, was the last final...
I just wanted to know, I just wanted to know when all of this happened, was before we could negotiate to make it better? It was a done deal when we got it? That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
It was a done deal? And in fact, we are looking at it now again, and I'm trying to see what I can salvage from this. And we're in the process of just doing research and trying to figure out the best options.
Thank you, corporate counsel.
I think the bottom line is the council's looking for a plan as expediently as possible to get this off our books.
I told you Jeremy is very hot on this, and it's a matter of weeks, not months or years, certainly.
Okay.
All right, thank you. With that, I vote aye.
Councilperson Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano. Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera. Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Aye.
We have 9-0. D and E were approved earlier, so all of them from A to M, 9-0. P has been withdrawn, so it's N through W, P withdrawn.
N through W?
Yeah. N, resolutions N through W, Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano. Yoon.
I said no for T, rest of it, yes.
Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman. LeVarah.
Aye.
N through W, 9-0, P withdrawn, T is 8-1. Councilperson Yoon voting no. Y through Z, 6, Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Z2, no. I and the rest.
Councilman Bajano.
Yes on everything but Z2. And I say that Z2 should be pulled until Mr. Farrell gets a decision on the 10th Street Embankment and the discrimination against one individual, developer against another. So I would say that Z2 should be pulled.
But you're, it's up for a vote. Your vote is?
No.
On Z2. Councilperson Yoon. Councilperson Osborne.
Aye.
Councilperson Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Waterman.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
X through Z6 unanimously 9-0, except Z2 is 7-2. Councilpersons Ramchall and Bajano voting no. The balance of business, Z7 through Z13. Councilperson Gudjuski.
Aye.
Ramchall.
Aye.
Bajano. Yoon.
Aye.
Osborne.
Aye.
Coleman.
Aye.
Rivera. Waterman.
Aye.
LeVarah.
Just on Z8, the source of those funding, funds are Sandy dollars?
Oh, Z8.
He voted already, Yoon.
I have to change this, Z8, I say no. Z8.
The source, so it'll be 90% reimbursed through Sandy, assuming our application is approved. Okay, and then I vote aye and all.
Okay, Z7 through 13 unanimously, except Z8.
Councilor Michael, no.
8-1, Councilman Yoon voting no. Council members to adjourn this meeting at 9:23. Have a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Ladies have it. To adjourn at 9:23. By acclamation, say goodnight.
Aye.
Out of here, thank you.